The meeting is now being recorded.
Great, thank you, Madam Secretary. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to day two of our January Board of Trustees meeting for the State Bar. Strategic planning in the works. We will call the roll, please, to start our open session this morning and convene very quickly into closed session. Ms. Secretary?
Broughton?
Here.
Chen?
Here.
Cisneros?
Here.
De La Cruz?
Here.
Dylan?
Here.
Duran?
Here.
Benong? Saleig? Shelby?
Present.
Soul?
Present.
Stallings?
Here.
Tony?
Petten.
You have a quorum chair.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is a call for public comment on closed session. Is there anybody in the public who would wish to address the board before we convene into closed session? See, we have six attendees. Looks like no one is indicating an interest to speak to the board, so we will go into closed session. We anticipate coming back in open session right around 11 o'clock this morning. So we will see folks then. Thank you very much.
Are we getting another new link, Louisa, or using the closed session link from yesterday?
If you if you have access to that, you can use the same link, but I have an email prepared that I'll be sending out right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
We are now recording.
Great, thank you, Madam Secretary. We are back from closed session. I will note for the record that there is nothing reportable from that closed session. I want to again offer my my thanks for everyone's patience in us getting started here with the open session. The plan for the next fifteen, twenty minutes is to to finish one little piece of business on the strategic planning. We will take a thirty minute lunch break and then come back to finish up the strategic planning and the rest of the day. I do want to thank the trustees for their attendance and and very valuable input this morning on the closed session. And all of you for for being here. So with that, we are going to move on. Ms. Pye, I'm assuming that I can just go ahead and start with what this fifteen minutes is going to be?
I think the only thing I'd like to do is maybe two things, Mr. Chairman. One is I heard you say thirty minutes for lunch break. I just want to confirm that because our notes said forty-five, but I want to confirm that we're bumping that down to thirty. So that's the first thing. I'm adjusting the agenda accordingly. I want you to know that we will have a couple of stretch breaks to give people a chance to check email and to get up and walk around across the afternoon. And then the second thing I wanted to do is just have everyone just kind of take themselves back or recall Ms. Wilson's report out yesterday. And, you know, I know many of you were taking notes. And so part of what was supposed to happen, had we not run out of time, is after sort of collecting that that feedback from from Leah on goals and and progress, we then wanted to take this this fifteen minutes or so, and have you, Mr. Chairman, talk about the vision going forward and and how you want us to approach this conversation this afternoon. So with that, I will turn it back to you.
Great, thank you very much. And that's exactly what I was what I was thinking. So just to refresh everyone's recollection, Leah went through a very comprehensive look at our last strategic plan, reviewed what was done, the successes as well as the challenges and difficulties and where we may have fallen a little bit short on those goals. And so the thought here is to get the trustees' reactions to Leah's presentation generally. If there are specific questions you want to ask her by way of follow-up from that presentation, this is the opportunity, again, with the thought that the rest of the day is to develop our next five-year plan, which of course has to be informed by where we sit now in light of our our goals from five years ago. So with that, I will open it up to the trustees. Any questions or comments from Leah's presentation yesterday on on the strategic plan just ended, just ending?
I didn't get an opportunity to share this, excuse me, I didn't get an opportunity to share this with the general public yesterday, but I did share it when we met privately, and so I wanted to be able to share this more broadly. But I am just, you know, after being here for over a little over a year, I'm absolutely blown away by all that this organization does. And just want to say thank you to Ms. Wilson and the entire State Bar organization because distilling that into a conversation, that thirty-four-page presentation, it was just impressive. And I think oftentimes we get so saddled with what we're not doing right and with the challenges that we're hearing that we don't get an opportunity to really reflect on all this organization has done. And so for me, it was it crystallized why I feel so honored to be around this dais serving with all of you. And just want to say to the State Bar staff, thank you for all that you do because so many of you have been with the State Bar for such a significant amount of time. And it is very clear that you are committed professionals. Wonderful to have Ms. Wilson back in the role of Executive Director. Recognize that we have challenges and opportunities moving forward, but would be remiss if I didn't take that opportunity, this opportunity as a board member, to just merely say thank you. And then I'll also close my comments. And thank you to Mr. Stallings and Mr. Duran for your leadership. Thank you to Mr. Saleig for his past leadership, which is the leadership that I came under. And to my colleagues on the board, I think we have some exciting times ahead. I think excitement also means that there are some laboring in the fields. But what an incredible opportunity that we have to serve the public. And then last but certainly not least, and I don't know how you do this, Ms. Wilson, but how you take that thirty-four pages and turn it into something, I think there's a roadshow that needs to go with what you presented to us. And so I certainly look to you and your leadership and in your team's leadership in terms of making that happen. And I also want to recognize Donna because Donna was was leading the helm when I first came here. But it's it's mind-blowing to see what this organization has done in its new iteration and form because you used to be something very different prior to two thousand and eighteen. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Trustee Shelby. Floor is open. I will jump in to just echo a little bit of what Trustee Shelby said. Although I, you know, I've already gotten a taste of how much the organization does having been here for a couple of years more than she. But it is never, it is, it never ceases to amaze me truly the 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 amount of work that happens behind the scenes in serving our two hundred and two hundred-plus-thousand licensees and the public that they are meant to serve as well. What struck me particularly about Leah's presentation is, again, the scope and the breadth of what the bar has done over the past five years in its first iteration as a de-unified, as purely a regulatory agency. There's a lot of success there, but I think that Ms. Wilson was very honest with us and and with the public and where the challenges still lie, where where we have room to improve. And I think that is, again, the tenor of the conversation that I want I want us to engage in moving forward with the rest of the day. And that is, how do we move forward? How do we improve with maybe even some new, you know, some new insight and some new goals? And so that's I leave that to the to the to the group here so that we can develop those together with the assistance, of course, of Ms. Pye and Ms. Wilson and many, many fine people who support them. Ms. Dylan?
Um, thank you, Chair. I really echo what Trustee Shelby and and what you have said about the presentation. I'm so glad that we do really have, for me, a guidance on how we're going to go through the through our planning. Thank you so much for that. And I also would like to acknowledge Ms. Pye in getting us through this and working with us. But this has been very helpful. It's been very, the presentation has been very helpful succinct and and something that will really make it even clearer for us to go through the planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Dylan. Looking around the screen, don't see any raised hands, but any questions?
One question from me for either all of you or just a few of you. The thing that I appreciated most about the presentation that Leah shared with with the trustees yesterday is she, in addition to talking about the status on goals from the five-year plan, there are also some challenges and opportunities that she teed up in each of the areas of the board's mission. Is there anything that stood out to anyone that we want to be sure we take into the conversation this afternoon? I certainly made some notes. I saw others of you making notes. Certainly, there was a lot of discussion around, you know, communicating out, you know, some communicating out some of what was discussed. But I also heard a teeny bit around resource and I heard a teeny bit around more support for lawyers, put consumers first, need to engage consumers, just anything on the challenges slides that anyone heard that we just want to be sure we take into this afternoon's conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Pye. Trustee Chen?
So on the topic of support for attorneys, and I think Leah also touched on this yesterday, I very much want to continue past conversations we've had at board meetings and at strategic planning sessions to talk about what's been referred to as proactive regulation, but what I actually view as proactive support for attorneys. So we're not just, the State Bar isn't just coming in at the discipline stage to say you did that wrong, but to provide support to say, here's how to get it right. And here are resources to help you do that. Here's a checklist that you can use in this situation. Or if you're confronted with this, here's a decision tree that might help you understand things in a clear way. I think that would go a long way towards protecting the public, but also just supporting attorneys. And so I think that was a really important challenge that that Leah brought out yesterday.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Chen. What an excellent point to reinforce. Trustee Tony? You're on mute, sir.
Thank you. In one of the things that I think would be useful is when we think about protecting the public, when we think about serving the legal needs of of California consumers, which I think is, you know, a core part of our mission. What we ought to do is try to parse that down a little bit because not all consumers are treated, are created equal, if you will. I think there are a lot of attorneys that, so in other words, I think that organizational customers, I'm talking about corporations, I'm talking about nonprofit organizations like my, like the one I run, okay? We're very well-served by the legal system, okay? And we're very well-served because we put it in our annual budget, okay? And and I'm willing to bet that a large number of the two hundred thousand that we talk about approximately are engaged in representing organizations or corporations. I I I would like us to look at who is serving the rest of the forty million individuals in California. And I bet it's a lot less than the two hundred thousand. And I'd like us in this strategic planning to focus, to really have a focus on who is being underserved. And I think part of that is not using the number. There are two hundred thousand attorneys who are available for forty million California residents. I I think it's not quite accurate, and I think getting more accurate will help us understand how to do a better job.
Thank you, Trustee Tony. At a certain point, I think that we'll look to Ms. Wilson to remind us of what the Attorney, Annual Attorney Census tells us about how many lawyers work in law firms at various sizes. And I think we can extrapolate how many lawyers in are solo practitioners or in small law firms. Maybe you don't have to extrapolate. Maybe we actually have those numbers.
We we do, but we also have economic census data that helps us understand at a macro level within our state the dollar spend on the corporate legal market versus the individual consumer market. And that is something that we've highlighted in some of our work around creating the paraprofessional program, for example, that you see this real disproportionality in legal spend. But this is an area I think that's really important for us to stay on top of, is sort of that macroeconomic trend because things really are changing in the in the legal market.
Excellent point. Thank you. Trustee Stallings?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to build off of what Trustee Tony just talked about, one of the things that I've discussed kind of more on an internal level is issues that are specific to rural areas and frontier frontier areas in California and ways that we, as a State Bar, can meet the legislative mandate as set forth in Business and Professions Code six zero zero one point one. And in two thousand and eighteen, the legislature made it clear that protection of the public, which includes support for greater access to and inclusion in the legal system, shall be the highest priority of the bar. And Ms. Wilson, in her reports, page thirty of her report, the challenges and opportunities regarding access, access to the legal system, set forth the challenge of lack of support for regulatory reform as a means of increasing access. So I think ways that we can explore supporting access to the legal system that maybe don't involve regulatory reform, but other things that that we may have at our disposal. So I'd really like to have a more end-up conversation about what that looks like.
Thank you, Trustee Stallings. Trustee Broughton?
Thank you. It's interesting to me that both Brandon and I raised our hands after the comments of Mr. Tony relative to the access to justice issue. And that's one of the things I think Brandon and I can bring to the to the table is because I am in the Central Valley, I generally am connected, if you will, or practice from Kern County down in Bakerfield all the way up to Stanislaus County and and all of the areas in between. Several of the poorest counties in this state are in our area of jurisdiction. And I have, over the period of five years, frequently jumped in on that issue. And I think it can bring a great perspective on that. It's a shame to me that we're dealing with that right now. But it was one of the things that during, and I was reminded of this, was one of the issues that early on, when we went to to define this organization, we had to decide whether we're going to deal with it or not. There are so many people that have no access to this judicial system at all. And I think we really need to figure out what we're going to do. I looked at the mission statement again, and it says, support the efforts of greater access to and inclusion in the legal system. I don't really know what that means and how as a practical matter. And I think hopefully we can get into this in our planning sessions here later on today and really figure out what it is that we, as a bar association, can do.
Thank you, Trustee Broughton. On that note, I think we should take the next thirty minutes to, you know, to sort of prepare for that piece of the conversation. We are the thirteen people who get to fill in the blanks, I think, Trustee Broughton, on what that phrase in our mission statement means, among other things. So unless there's anyone else who wants to offer something for the good of the order, let me take a look around. Don't see anybody. Let's look at that right at noon. Let's reconvene at twelve-thirty. Enjoy your lunch, everyone.
Recording right now. And we're recording.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. We are reconvened after a very quick lunch. Thank you all for coming back. I hope you got refreshed a little bit. And we're going to just jump right into it. I'm going to hand hand the mic, as it were, over to Ms. Pye to lead us in the next portion.
Okay, so let me just do a couple of quick reminders. We will definitely take a couple of breaks this afternoon and give folks time to just stretch, check email, and grab an extra coffee if they need it or water. This next segment, which will probably take about thirty minutes to go through, just sort of goes to outcomes. And I do want you, as we approach today, to think about, again, as we said yesterday, this is not about having a proposal written and tied up in a, put in a box and tied up with a red ribbon. But this is more about making sure that we incorporate as much of your good thinking as we can. But this next piece is a little bit about outcomes, at least I think it'll help guide our discussion. We're going to talk for a bit about our primary audiences and who who is going to benefit from our success. And if we are successful with this next five-year plan, who's who are the who are the beneficiaries? Just want you to all to start to think about that. And then the only place we're going to get a little bit tactical is on the piece that that Mr. Taylor is going to lead for us. And that's just around what we think this work product ought to look like. Several of you said yesterday that it was really important that this take a high level, we take a high-level approach to strategic planning. There have been some great tactics that have been discussed that we're all recording that will make their way into what what we're going to call, at least for now, buckets. But again, we want to keep this at a high level, but think for a second or two about what we think this work product ought to look like. Then we will, that should take about twenty or thirty minutes, and then we're really going to go into what I like to call this part, where we're really squishing around and talking about a lot of what we heard, what we think, what we feel. This is not scientific. We we recognize that we, this is a public setting, but we want folks to be, you know, comfortable, just kind of, you know, pushing and pulling a little bit. It's that great creative tension that gets us to the other end of of the spectrum and gets this work product done. So that's what the the great bulk of the afternoon is going to be spent doing. Along that line, we will probably come up with some issues that we'll just put on the parking lot. Travis is kind of tracking those things for me. There may be some immediate to-dos that go onto our list. There will be some big ideas and some big issues. We will start to try to put those things in front just too. So that's what we want to try to accomplish. And then we'll come back and talk a teeny bit about resource. We'll talk a little bit again about audiences and stakeholders. We'll come up with some action items and next steps, and then we will do a wrap-up. Quite a bit to cover, and I'm really grateful for the participation. So any questions? Concerns? Just want to be sure. Everybody on the same page? Okay, great. So thing I want to just have everybody share your two cents on, and let's just take about ten minutes if we can for this piece. Who are our primary audiences? Who benefits most from our success? As you all think about this five-year plan going forward, simply put, who's it for? And I'll start with you, Mr. Chair.
I mean, I think it has to be for the public, right? We are here to protect the public. I'm not so sure that that's the first thing I would have said when you asked who the audience was. The first thing that came to my mind is our licensees are our biggest and primary audience. But who, you know, who the benefit is, is for the public.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Broughton?
All right, but that, I I agree. I might make it more specific. It's the public that use legal services.
Okay. That's a good build.
I'll just say there, Ms. Pye, if I could, that 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 in and of itself could be expanded and probably should be expanded from from the work that we've, you know, been looking at.
Okay. Other feedback? And I want to call out the fact that I heard you. Our audience may be licensees, but but the beneficiaries may look like like someone different. So let's keep that conversation going. Mr. De La Cruz, please.
Yeah, I agree with both, the public. I'm a public servant, so. But I also, in terms of attorneys, diversifying the workforce, right? Diversity, inclusion, equity, and inclusion in making sure that we diversify the attorney pool that we have to represent the public. So I think those two would be top of mind for me.
So let me be sure I'm clear. Potential audiences for you are potential attorneys?
Yes.
You're attorneys, if you will?
Exactly.
Okay. Mr. Stallings?
So just to build on what Ruben and Mark said, I think our audience is not only the public that we serve, and then on a finer point, the people who consume legal services, but those who need legal services and don't have access to them. That's absolutely one way we protect the public.
Thank you. Ms. Dailin?
Just to expand, those who do not have access, but also those who cannot afford to this access to legal justice.
Okay. And Ms. Wilson?
Well, I think the audience has to include our sort of key legislative stakeholders, in particular, our Supreme Court stakeholders, because it is a very affirmative and public signaling of our priorities and what we intend to do. And then another important audience is staff and prospective staff because it's a reflection of the culture and the values of the organization that informs the staff we have, but also the staff that we want to, that we want to have.
Okay. Thank you. I like that. Anyone else? Mr. Soul?
I guess all I would say in hearing this is is that I guess we're part of that audience as well as board members because this is the template that is going to keep us on track, keep us focused, keep us coordinated, and is our roadmap for the for the next few years.
I like that. Thank you. Whoever I heard from, Ms. Shelby?
I think that I think all of the stakeholders have been identified that I would have shared.
Okay.
I I might just, you know, I would say marginalized, disenfranchised, and underrepresented communities if we want to get a little more specific. But outside of that, I concur with what everyone said.
Thank you.
Can I put something on the table a little bit? One of the mayors with whom I work often refers to the city's partners in getting the city's mission done, right? And it's, to me, it's a, it's almost a little bit of a variation on the stakeholder role. And when Ms. Wilson was talking about the legislative, the our legislative stakeholders, the court, our our staff, our employees, to me, I also see that we we should be, want to be in partnership with those people in moving our mission forward that we develop through this strategy.
Okay. And Mr. Tony, I've not heard from you, sir.
When you say audience, are you later going to ask us about stakeholders and partners? I'm only asking to to know how I should be responding to this.
Um.
Or should I put it all in?
I I let's. Let's talk about everybody. So who's who's on your list?
Okay, so I I really think this concept of partnership is really important, partnership with stakeholders. And so I think we need, you know, And so I think we need, you know, that that it's important for the state bar to have a partnership with the legislature. I I think that they are an incredibly important stakeholder, and I think we should treat them as partners, that that's important. I also think that's true for the state auditor, okay? The state auditor is a huge stakeholder in accountability for the state bar. And we should also be looking at them and embracing them as a partner. And this this one may sound a little harsh, but I got to tell you that, you know, part of the, what I think about is, you you know, accountability is kind of like, there are a lot of levels of accountability that the state bar is accountable. A lot of ways, we are held accountable. And sometimes it's easy to think about the bodies that hold us accountable as adversaries instead of partners. So I'd say another audience is the media, okay? It's the media's job to hold the state bar and to hold any government agency accountable. That's their job. And I think we should embrace that, work to embrace that, and work to also reach out and look for opportunities to let the media know about things that are happening that they may not know and to be more proactive. So that that's how I think about this.
Appreciate that. So so while you're at it, because this was going to be the third part of the question for this segment, and that is, who are existing allies? Mistress Narrows, you're nodding. You got somebody in mind?
Well, I was going to build on some of the previous statements about our partners. I do think that state government entities play a big role and are a huge, a big part of the audience for this strategic plan and for all the reasons that Mark and others have just mentioned. I think our partners are, you know, kind of, defined broadly, really cover a wide swath. And I think we want to keep a lot of them in mind. And our stakeholders, you know, similarly fall in all sorts of categories. The people we serve, the people we report to, and the organizations that fund us, support us, and challenge us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair?
I think the law schools are an important component of many of our, many of our missions, right? Admissions, obviously, but also preparing lawyers to be competent ethical practitioners so that they don't end up in the regulatory and the disciplinary system so much.
Are law schools our audience beneficiary or stakeholder slash partners?
Yeah, I think I'd put them in two of those three buckets, the audience and the beneficiaries potentially. I'd be interested to hear, I'd be interested to hear their, the law school dean's perspective on that, right? Whether they they feel like beneficiaries of the work that the bar does.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So let me do a quick recap and see if there's anybody to add. From from an audience perspective, I've got licensees, future attorneys, key legislative stakeholders, key Supreme Court stakeholders, staff and prospective staff, trustees, this this body, our guest body itself, because this is going to be a roadmap for your work these next five years, law schools. Beneficiaries also, who is this, who are these goals for? Law schools again, but public who use the legal services, public in general, public members who are in need of legal services and don't have them or can't afford them, disenfranchised communities. And then under stakeholders slash partners, I've got the legislature and other state government entities, the state auditor, and the media, which Mr. Tony suggests we ought to just own and embrace. Ms. Dalen?
As partners, I think the working committees and and the volunteers, so that, you know, we can work collaboratively, we're making sure that that what we communicate is clear and what the policies that we're doing, that we're working collaboratively.
It's a good point to remember, because these are folks that you really want to buy into your goals, right, as they're going to have to be partners with helping you implement them. It's a very good point. Thank you. Mr. Broden?
Yes, when I answered the question, I only heard who benefits from this. It seems to me that that the licensees themselves could also be beneficiaries, because part of the mission statement is to advance the ethical and competent practice of law so that the licensees themselves could be direct beneficiaries. I would also put in on the broader thing, perhaps our former subentities, for example, the Access Commission and so forth, if they'll actually talk to us.
As beneficiaries?
I'm sorry?
As beneficiaries?
No.
Partners or audience?
As as sort of what we call here, justice partners.
Okay.
We're talking partnerships now, and so I'm saying you may want to reach out to those former ones as well as the California Lawyer Association.
Got it. Ms. Chen? Please.
I didn't hear it on the list. Maybe I missed it, and maybe it's already there, but the judiciary strikes me as a beneficiary of, you know, ethical, the ethical practice of law and the rules of professional responsibility and the enforcement of those rules.
Got it. All right. So this is a comprehensive list. I think it is going to help us think about goals with, I wanted to help us think about goals with that in mind. Let me go back to the other question I asked, and then we'll we'll go to the next segment, Travis. Let's talk about current allies and potential allies. Anybody? Mr. Tony? You're on mute, sir.
Thank you. Just listening to this conversation, it it, listening to Trustee De La Cruz talk about the importance of making sure that we focus on equity, inclusion, and diversity within the field of law practice. And also someone bringing up law schools. It it makes me think that law schools may also have the potential of being a partner and ally, because I'm I'm willing to venture that law schools also want very much and have as a core mission to diversify and the legal profession field. And I think they spend a lot of time trying to recruit candidates to come in. And so that would be an area that I could imagine that we could reach out and have a conversation about how our efforts can complement each other.
Like that. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, comprehensive list, if we were in person, we'd be able to reference this up on the board. If you wind up just kind of needing me to repeat it, I'm happy to do that through through the rest of the conversation, but that's very helpful. I'm going to just move quickly then to just, again, just the one segment where we're going to be a little bit tactical, but this is just to help us get a sense of where you all are relative to what the final work product might look like. And my my esteemed colleague, Mr. Taylor, is going to pull up a couple of samples for us to take a look at and maybe walk us through and get some feedback from all of you. So thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra, and thank you, everyone. Been following the discussion. Definitely, we've had some good discussion yesterday and today. So you're all familiar with your strategic plan, but we also wanted to show you some examples of other strategic plans. We're going to quickly walk through three examples. CalSTRS, Florida Bar, and also the Insurance Diversity Task Force. We'll talk a little bit about how the plans are structured and styled, what's similar, what's different. And we'd also like to get your feedback on. And we're not focused on content at this point. It's really more about that structure and style. And there was discussion yesterday about the complexity of the bar and the challenge of communicating what you do with your audiences. So if I could plant the seed as we review these examples, it would be the clarity. Is it possible to be clear and concise without sacrificing substance? And it's important to note, as we go through these plans, we're not looking to demonstrate what's right or wrong. Each strategic plan is unique and specific to that organization, but they can be helpful as we think about developing your next strategic plan. And so the first one, the California State Teachers Retirement System, this plan is geared for 2017, or I'm sorry, 2019 to 2022. It's twelve pages total. It's concise, high-level direction and measurement. It's rooted in its mission, vision, and values. There's an introduction section right in the beginning from the CEO, the now former CEO, that helps frame and add context to the strategic plan. It was formed, informed by employee survey, feedback, interviews, and facilitated conversations with leadership and obviously the teachers' retirement board. There's four focus areas. You'll see right here in the vision of success page. Each of the focus areas has its own goal, financial governance, digital transformation, member employer, members for them being educators, employers being school districts, and organizational strength. And one thing that just came to my thought here, just to disclose, CalSTRS is another client of our firms. We did not work on this strategic plan, but we're saying. This vision of success, what they did is they were looking at targeting 2028 beyond the years of the strategic plan, thinking about the outcomes. What did they want to happen? As you see, they're very high-level items to think about where do they want to get to and use that as a guide for the strategic planning process. They restate their mission, vision, and core values. They do a visualized strategy map with these four focus areas and how they relate to the vision and mission. And then here's really the the process of the strategic plan. So what they did is they they have one page per goal, and then they have about four to five objectives per goal. And then they include one to four ways to measure and target each objective. So again, one page per goal, it's very high-level and succinct, but you see the clarity in terms of the objectives that flow from the goal and then how they measure and target. And CalSTRS obviously a pension system concerned about return on investment, concerned about funding teacher retirements, measurement and long-term planning is a very important part of their core functions. You just see that it's the layout just slightly, but it's the same consistent style across these. Before I move on to the next one, any questions or comments regarding that plan? Mr. Grant?
I I just like this one visually. I like the use of the bullet points that are, I mean, there are, there are many bullet points in some of those, some of those goals, but they're 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 meaty enough to understand what this organization is interested in, what they care about, and what they're intending to work on. This, I think, is one of my favorites, actually.
Yeah, it, we don't see a lot of measurement and targets in different strategic plans that we looked at. We try to show you these ones. The three that we're that we're looking at are all succinct. So we think that's important, given the complexity of the state bar and trying to simplify those things. But this one was was interesting in its layout. Okay, and I can't see everybody, so if I can get some help from from the team, if there's any comments.
I'll let you know if there are any hands up.
Thank you. So the next one is on the Florida Bar. This strategic plan is 2019 to 2022, five pages total. There's no introduction or context. It's really just the facts. Restating the mission right up top, we've got five objectives. And then the subsequent pages go through on each of these objectives. So you see like objective one, and then a list of action items. So they have one page per objective with four to seven action items per objective. And if we go through and you see, this is the structure of of all the objectives. But I want to point out an objective five, which covers diversity and inclusion. They include this extra section to help clarify the Florida Bar Board of Governors view of the term diversity. It's the only objective that has an added description where you have some context that helps you see, look into their thinking. Now, what I what I don't know is there might be a companion document or something else that led into it, but we're really focused specifically on the strategic plan here. So that was something I wanted to point out. Any questions or comments on this document before I go on to the next one?
Any thoughts on that one, Mr. Chair, since you waited on the first one?
Okay. And again, we're not focused on content or what's right or wrong, but just as you think about what you're looking for for the state bar, seeing these these different components in addition to the the plans that you had before. This one's a little bit different. So this is the Insurance Diversity Task Force. They work in coordination with the California Department of Insurance and Commissioner Ricardo Lara, different stakeholders that came together to form this strategic plan. So we thought this would be an interesting one to show you. It's only focused on one year, right? It's 2020, 2020 to 2021, ten pages total. There's an introduction from the the director. Again, lays a little bit of context, helps kind of frame up the discussion, what went into it. They had a number of discussions between the California Department of Insurance and the staff and the task force members, as well as various internal and external stakeholders, and that led them to the development of this plan. Similar to CalSTRS, they restate their vision, mission, mission, and goals. And these are a vision, mission, and goals that are specific to the task force. And then what they did is they focused on two high-level areas. As you see at the top in the brown, it's advancing governing board diversity. That was one. The second one is advancing supplier diversity. Those appear to be both pulled from their vision and their overarching task force goals. So they kind of took those two branches and then developed their strategic goals underneath those. And so for each of those high-level areas, they broke it down into two to three categories with one to three goals for each category, and then each goal has one to three objectives. So there's more layering in this one. Where they they looking at the governing board diversity and supplier diversity. And so you see these kind of top topics to generate awareness of the governing board diversity, publicize achievements to incentivize change among insurers, highlight the impact of diversity initiative and task force. This one had three different categories, and the other one has two. And then for each of these areas, then they have the goals underneath and key objectives. So it's a little bit harder to ascertain the the flow from where it starts to where it ends, but they're covering a lot of ground. And and they're also looking to achieve consensus among a number of stakeholders to get there. But you still have a pretty overall simple design, easy to see, and and go off of. Similar to the Florida Bar, we don't see the measurement pieces or anything, but there could be a companion plan. I know for CalSTRS, they have an annual business plan that they that they track with staff to help ensure implementation of the larger strategic plan. So with that, I'll stop the share, but I'd like to get reactions. Is there anything that you that you see that you would like to incorporate into what we're doing for the the state bar strategic plan, anything that you don't want to incorporate? Or any other expectations or examples that you'd like to share?
And try to answer that question with the conversation we just had in mind around our audiences, who's going to benefit? Who are stakeholders and partners are, you know, who who's going to look at this?
Mr. Stone?
You know, I I don't know if there's any particular document that I saw that did too much for me, you know, compared to the document that we already have. But really, what struck me, just in the context of our last discussion topic, was the use of, or potentially the use of, very The use of or potentially the use of various sub. Sub graphics to pop out. So you could view the strategic plan either as a stakeholder. You know, our intended audience, you know, person going in could choose. How they want to view that, you know, what, what the intended audience was. And then for there to be measurable. Ideas or goals for them as the audience and how they could partner with the state bar and particular goals. And so I think there, there could be some cool. You know, graphic ways to get people to buy into this mission and to see how they can continue to partner with us on our strategic plan. So. I don't know if that makes, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it's like an interactive strategic plan and you could filter. Based on, you know, who you are, what you're interested in looking at and thinking about a power BI. Based strategic plan.
Yep. And so, and that would, it could include links to. Um, you know, if you're a member of the public and you want to get involved in access to justice initiatives, there's the link right there. And so it'd just be kind of like this massive clearinghouse for. Uh, ways to partner with the state bar and not just a place to stop, to, to, you know, stop. Uh, but a, a place of beginning to, uh, really continue that buy-in.
Visually. Have something that's compelling for, um, for a wide swath of your audiences as, as, as inclusive as possible. Have the simplicity so that it's easy for, for folks to consume and understand, but then you get the depth and engagement so that you could go deeper and. And, and perhaps lead to some sort of engagement. Does that capture that right? All right. Thank you. Ms. Shelby.
I was happy to see the insurance diversity initiative example, because I was the first vice chair on that initiative. Once that bill was passed. And so they've come a very long way and then I served as chair as well. Um, you know, the, the four things that I wrote down were context, educate, clarity and measurement. That, that's how I see and envision. A strategic plan and then something that lives in an electronic and a physical environment because. A large part of our constituency, um, when, when I think of the public who calls in, um. And they, they've got a, a, a regulatory issue with representation. You know, how does this document live in a physical form? That someone can touch and feel. And then how does this document live in an electronic form? But I, but I, I do think. Context in terms of what it is, what it's supposed to achieve. Educate in terms of understanding clarity in terms of being concise, because I don't think people read. And I, I, I say that respectfully as a public member. I know all of you attorneys have done a significant amount of reading and distilled through a lot of information. And then measurement, I would say within the context of measurement tracking as well, right? Because you want people to be able to track your performance. And I would also add accomplishments. I don't know accomplishments because, and maybe that's inside of context. Maybe that's inside of level setting. Sorry.
I didn't see who jumped up next, but Mr. Durant.
Actually, I think Mr. Tony had a sound raise before I did.
Mr. Tony.
Thank you. Um, you know, I was, um, it was useful for you to put those back up. Um, and for having included those examples in the packet. Um, beforehand for us to review. So I do appreciate that. And, you know, part of what it made me wonder is. Whether there would be value in considering a strategic plan of a shorter duration than five years. To kind of really kind of push the urgency, you know, it's, it's interesting. I, I deal a lot in climate policy. And there are all these goals for 2035, 2045. It's really easy to get people to say yes on things that so far in the future. That you don't have to do anything right away. Okay. And even a five-year plan, there's a sense of, well, we've got five years to get there. And I think there are a number of priorities and charges that the state bar has where there's an expectation. That we get there sooner than five years. So that, that, you know, part of it, and, and seeing the insurance one year plan, right? It was like, oh, a one-year strategic, I've never seen anything like that. Oh, huh, maybe, you know, a two to three year strategic plan and then we'll do it again. So, so that's part of what it made me think about. Um, I, I will say that I. Your plan, I'm, I'm less interested in the format and more interested in what it needs to have. But we, we need to, I think it helps to have a shared sense of vision. And a shared sense of beliefs. You know, the vision of what kind of world do we want to build? What is it we want to see? What's our vision, our aspirations, our biggest aspirations of what the bar could do? And then believe, what do we believe? What do we believe should be the end state of what people deserve? Do we really believe, um, that having access to legal services is a right that everybody should have? Um, I, I don't think we do, and that's okay. Okay. I, I, that, that may be a bridge too far. But whatever it is we believe, I, 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 I think a strategic plan is a home for that. And, and then as was brought up by trustee Shelby, we need to have some measurable goals there. And if we end up with the five years, because we think that's what the legislature mandates us to do. Then we need to have interim goals on an annual basis that are part of the strategic plan. So that we, um, it doesn't have the feeling of, well, we didn't get it to it this year. And we, we, we got four more years. What's the rush? I, I, I want to make sure that we, we feel and act upon a sense of urgency.
Really helpful and you, you, you got me excited with some of the things you're talking about, because that. We're going to get in some of that discussion on the, on the substance. Mr. Durant.
Trustee Tony's discussion just reminded me of something I heard earlier with respect to near-term midterm and long-term goals. And I think, I think that, uh, that's something that we should keep in mind as we're developing, uh, the strategy writ large, but also the document we're talking about. With respect to the document, the formatting actually does, does make a difference to me because, um, as trustee Shelby pointed out. I, I think we know that most people just aren't going to sit and read long, long text. It's just as we were showing, as you were showing the, the samples on the screen. The reason why I liked, uh, the Calsters one so much was because it, it was digestible and those bullet points were, were. Uh, what's the right word? You know, they, they were meaningful. They were, they were substantive. The tracking also was a very important piece for me. Just visually, um, I found it a much more. User-friendly document, but it actually had content that spoke to me, even though I'm not so familiar with what Calsters does. So those are my thoughts.
Cassandra knows we had some like, you know, over 50-page examples that we decided not to include in your packet. Uh, Mr. Sol.
I, I just want to associate myself with, uh, with all the, the comments that have made, been made thus far. Uh, and in particular, I would like to zero in on what, uh, trustee Tony just mentioned about, uh, a shorter duration of a, of a strategic plan. It was a thought that also came to mind for me. Uh, and I think it's something that can help us in terms of, uh, how the, the various audiences we just talked about. Uh, perceive us, uh, from an accountability standpoint and from an accessibility standpoint.
Ms. Chair.
I just wanted to second what, uh, Chair Duran noted about the digestibility of the first example that you showed us. To have everything visualized on one page. Um, I think for me and for various stakeholders, the public, the legislature, I think is hugely important to just. Understanding everything that is the state bar. Can we distill it down to that? I don't know, but I'd like us to try. Um, and then for each of those high level goals, having it all on one page, I think also is just. Helps you get your arms around just what is, what are we trying to do?
Ms. Wilson.
Yeah, I was just gonna share about the, the, um. Well, the statute does require 6140.12 here that we will implement a five-year strategic plan. To be updated every two years. So I don't, I don't think we have flexibility around the duration of the plan, but in the, in the current version, you know, there are a lot of. Initiatives with their own individual timelines. And I think that's what you're, you're all referencing is that there, you know, there would be interim benchmarks. Of progress along the way. So I just wanted to, to say that I, I don't think at this juncture, we have flexibility around the five-year reach.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Tony.
Um, I, 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 I think that our executive director is correct. We don't have the authority on our own, okay, to, um, uh, you know, do a shorter duration than five years. However, it may be the case that in consultation with the legislature. Of what we're planning to do and asking for their advice and input. Um, I could imagine that there's at least a possibility. That, um, the key stakeholders might, um, be open. I don't know. But, but I'm just saying that I think this is the kind of thing where. Uh, I, I'd like to feel that as part of the process. I mean, the good news is we're not making a decision today here. Okay. On the strategic plan, but I, 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 I think in terms of, you know, some of the directions we're going like, you know. Ex- exploring a shorter duration, I guess I would rather that we have that conversation. And then take their input into it. They may come up with a solution that we didn't think about. Or maybe they don't like it, but I, I'd rather know for sure rather than only point to a paper.
Mr. Sol.
I guess all I'll say is this, I understand what the statute says. Um, when is, when has the legislature ever turned its back or been upset with folks that, that do something sooner, faster or better?
Maybe that's something just for us to keep in mind in terms of the timing component as we go into the next parts of the discussion. Because some of these items could be more of a longer-term variety, but maybe benchmarks on the way. Or you might see things that are really pressing with a sense of urgency and you want to put that shorter timeline on it. So this might be something good just to, to keep in mind as we go forward. And with that, I think I'm going to pass things back over to Cassandra.
Yep. I think it's good discussion. I think it's helpful. I hear, um. A lot of consensus. Uh, the word of the hour might be digestible, but I also heard compelling inclusive. Simplicity, um, promote engagement. Context, educate, clarity, measurement, also include our accomplishments. Uh, from a format perspective. There ought to be both an electronic as well as a hard copy available. Um, so that we take into account all members of the public. Um, shared vision, shared belief, measurement, interim goals. Maybe this notion of near mid and long term, though, our executive director reminds us that we can add some timelines on key initiatives. So I think this is good feedback. Um, again, if you take that. This in, 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 and then tie that into, um, our discussion at the top of the hour. Around, um, who this is going to benefit. And who our audiences are and who our potential partners are. It's a great way to walk now into what's going to be the meat of the discussion for the afternoon. And, um, and that's the content. What's it going to say? So one of the things, uh, we want to do is get some feedback from all of you on. You know, again, you've got a lot of information both ahead of this conversation as well as. In some of the conversations we've had over the last couple of days. Before we talk through some of your feedback, we want our friend. There he is. We want our friend, Mr. McLeod to come on and just give us one more bit of, um. A feedback and then we'll go back, go into some of the discussion around, um, content. So we're going to talk, you are going to talk about. The public.
Thanks, Cassandra. So we were able to provide all of you with feedback that we've gotten from, um, surveys that we conducted of attorneys. Um, discussions that we've had with state bar staff, surveys that we also conducted, um, with members, uh, the, the. Members of the sub-entities that, uh, work on behalf of the state bar. Um, what we weren't able to provide you with, uh, in advance of the meeting was feedback from the public. And there's been a lot of discussion about, um. The public, what is, who, you know, who are our public? What is the public that we are protecting? And, um, and what do they think? How do we get their input? And, um, we conducted a, uh, a survey of sorts, uh, using a crowdsourcing platform called Thought Exchange. And I'm going to show you the results of that. And I'm going to try and keep it brief because I think we're, uh, my sense is that we have a lot to cover. But, um, what I'd like to share with you, uh, in this PowerPoint real quickly is. Is the findings from the work that we did, uh, using this crowdsourcing tool, Thought Exchange. And, um, as soon as I get better using my Zoom screen after. Load these many years of using Zoom. Let me run through real quickly with you what we found, um, in soliciting feedback from the public about the work of the state bar. Thought Exchange, it's, uh, as I mentioned, a crowdsourcing, uh, application that allows. Uh, users to provide open-ended responses to questions. And then following the open-ended responses, when you ask people what they think about some topic. You've then, it then allows the users to rate each other's responses. So it's not just the solicitation of the input, but it's also then. Getting input from everybody who participated on, um, the different ideas that are, uh, generated through this platform. Um, we spent a week, um, soliciting input from the public. Um, to get their thoughts on six core state bar functions. These are the same core functions that we solicited input on from our licensees. And from members of sub-entities, and it's also the same buckets, a sort of core functions that we have been working with in terms of, you know, these are the primary things state bar does. Uh, promoting access to justice. We got 160 thoughts. Um, and as I mentioned, you get a thought from the participants and then the, the participants are asked, you get as many thoughts as the participants are willing to share. And then you get ratings of the different thoughts within that network. So on the question of promoting access to justice, we got 160 thoughts, 2,063 ratings. On admitting new attorneys to the profession, we got 123 thoughts. Uh, a little over 1,700 ratings on public protection and the discipline system. We got 60 thoughts. 347 ratings on promoting diversity and inclusion in law. We got 52 thoughts and 540 ratings and then promoting the ethical and competent practice of law, 50 thoughts, 345 ratings. And then the final of these six big buckets of core functions, we got, um. 36 thoughts and 267 ratings on the topic of investigating unauthorized practice of law. I'm going to show you what the top ranked thoughts were that we got in each of these areas. But I did want to just provide a quick overview of what I think are sort of like some, some meta findings. Outside of the specific thoughts that were provided to us. Um, the first and, and easy to see issue is that the interest of the public varies significantly depending upon the topic. We got, um, uh, the public had equal opportunity to weigh in on these topics. Um, there wasn't any one of these that was pushed out more than the other. Um, and yet we got 160 people responding to the issue, or excuse me, 160 of these, these thoughts. On the question of access, along with the 2,000 plus ratings. Of the question of access to justice compared to only 36 of these thoughts on the question of unauthorized practice of law. Big difference in terms of what engages the public when we, um, ask them about the core work of the state bar. Um, a second kind of meta finding here is that, um. I, I think this also gets to some of the conversations that we've been having regarding our public and. What it is that we're seeking to do for the public in terms of protecting them. I think that there's some fundamental misunderstanding about what the bar does. The law gets conflated with law enforcement, gets conflated with judges. And so some of the thoughts, um, are interesting. Uh, perhaps great public policy ideas, but not necessarily on point for what is within our scope of work. And so I think that that may point to a bit of a, uh, uh, just one of these challenges with regard to our public in terms of like, how do we. To get into a dialogue with them and to get their input, we really need to spend some time talking with them about what it is exactly that we do. And, and I think that this, there are limitations to doing that. Um, within the scope of this particular, um, tool that we were using to get the information. And then the final thing that I'll note, just that I, I, I. And then the final thing that I'll note, just that I I saw in the data was that in some cases, you know, soliciting information from the public it may not represent the public in the sense that people are self selecting in when we push these out to the public. We were certainly not targeting attorneys. We were not targeting applicants to the bar. And yet the people who selected in to comment on these topics in many cases provided answers that indicated that they have specialized knowledge, which really is only going to be coming from somebody who says an applicant to the bar. It's only going to be coming from licensee. So we saw a self selection of participants that appears to have included many applicants to the bar and attorneys in the sample. So so we have to be careful in terms of interpreting the content, the the results of the the survey. Because in in some cases, it's 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 not the public as we were trying to conceptualize it or think about it apart from our licensees or applicants to the bar. So with that said, let me go through quickly. We've got six topic areas, as I mentioned. And for each of those topic areas, what I'm going to show you is simply this is the prompt. And on this one, the prompt was for the question of the state bar discipline system and how we framed it in our prompt to the public, we did, because California state law requires the state bar to protect the public from attorneys engaging in misconduct. What do you think is the best way to protect the public from unethical attorneys? So we got these are our three top rated comments that we got. And they had to do with integrating ethical norms into all of law school and apprenticeship study instead of the current system of stand alone course and exam. Some additional commentary regarding law school classes and culture set out as a baseline for what's ethical, how to respond unethical conduct. These two both point to imposing serious discipline. The sort of follow ons may not be exactly correct. But the I think that the the lead comment on each of these, you'll see that the respondents are allowed to sort of say what their thought is and then talk a little bit about why they think that's important. And so these bold bolded text is what they said was their thought about the issue. And then the the follow on non bold text is what was shared in terms of why they believe that that's important. But in both cases, you're indicating that there's a belief that there's a need to impose serious discipline for attorneys who engage in misconduct. And these were the number two and number three rated comment. Before I proceed to the other five topics, I just want to pause because when you're in this share screen mode, you're you're flying blind. You don't have a chance to see if anybody has questions or comments.
I'll let you know if I see any hands.
Okay, thank you for that, Cassandra.
Of course.
So going back then to the presentation, the five remaining areas of core state bar operations that we asked about. The second prompt here is the state bar of California investigates fraud to protect Californians from scams run by people posing as attorneys and selling services that are not legal and allowed to provide. So you'll see, just communicating what unauthorized practice of law is, this is one of these things that we struggle with, I think. And you have to, it's a little bit wordy, but that's what we understand a non attorney unauthorized practice of law to be. So what do you think the state bar should do to protect California from this type of legal fraud? Our top ranked comments here had to do with sanctioning if it has jurisdiction and refer to appropriate agency to prosecute and hold these people accountable. That's good to see. And so far as this is something that we have certainly attempted to do within OCTC is to try to make sure that these cases are referred to district attorneys locally who do have the authority to sanction these cases. Actively investigate and seek out the crimes and prosecute, increase public awareness of how to avoid another area that we've spent a fair amount of time and energy working on it is reaching out to the communities that are most affected by unauthorized practice of law. And then educate the public about how to file complaints and increase capacity to investigate complaints. The third prompt here has to do with our admissions work. Each year, the state bar of California tests more than 10,000 applicants seeking to become licensed to practice law in California. What do you think the state bar should do to ensure that newly licensed attorneys are both competent and ethical? So here, it looks like it didn't really rise to the top. The thing that I mentioned earlier about having a lot of what appeared to be interested parties, more than the public, we had a lot of comments that came in, though it seemed that specifically referenced the national conference, the bar examiners that referenced the multi state bar exam, things that I don't think the public is generally aware of. But our top rated comments here had to do with finding new ways to admit attorneys, interview, work experience, testing on practice of choice. Here, admitting new attorneys under provisional license program for practice that are on high demand suggests some knowledge of the fact that we are doing provisional licensing right now. Provisional license for new attorneys to assist the big public demand that can't pay for an attorney in certain cases. And then please create a specifics, subject specific bar exam where future attorneys specialize in the fields that they intend to practice. Under the question of increasing access to justice, and as I showed at the outset, this was the this was the topic area that garnered the most thoughts and the highest number of ratings as well. State bar of California mission includes increasing access to justice. What do you think is the best way to increase access to justice in California? These are a bit thin. It's affordability, having equal access to a lawyer. And then this one is the only one that really begins to appear to get to something more like a policy solution or a recommendation with regard to policy requirement for pro bono work. On the question of diversity and inclusion, this was the prompt, the mission of the state bar of California include working to increase the diversity of the legal profession. What do you think is the best way to increase the diversity of the legal profession in California? Law school affordability rose to the top here. Make law school affordable without having to incur thousands, hundreds of thousands in student debt. Encouraging students to work hard to judge someone by the content of their character, not the color of the skin was the third top rated comment here on the promotion of diversity and inclusion in the legal profession.
Hey, Mr. McLeod, I want to, I want to go back to questions if you might very quickly. I apologize.
Yes, of course.
I think your comment was of the three responsive, of the three yeah, responses, one of them was more, this one right here. So the requirement for pro bono work that presents an opportunity for the board to talk about policy sort of issues or take policy positions. I actually think that the first one also presents some opportunity for us there. Having lawyers shouldn't just be for the rich. For some reason, that calls out to me from, I understand we, you know, we may not have policy authority over who can afford or who can, you know, how much money folks are making in the state, but I think we can and should think about this issue. I think it's important.
That that's a good point. It's it seems maybe more of a value statement. I'm not sure, you know, trustee Tony was mentioning earlier, you know, is is there a right? Should should one have a right to legal representation or access to the legal system? And if effective access really means having a lawyer, then that does speak to this question.
Okay, thanks.
This is the question of ethics. I think one of the under, sometimes under appreciated and overlooked areas, even though it's pretty core to our our work. State bar of California works to ensure that attorneys licensed in the state are both competent and ethical. What do you think the state bar should do to ensure that attorneys practicing law in California are competent and ethical? Here, we came in for a little bit of abuse. Agencies that live in glass houses should not throw stones. Although, you know, an emphasis here on some things that I think have been discussed and that will probably be discussed more in terms of the formulation of our current plan. Transparency and accountability are emphasized in this top ranked comment related to the promotion of ethical and competent practice of law. Hold the attorneys, I may perhaps, it holds it to a much higher standard than, yes, it holds attorneys to a much higher standard than average citizens. Do not dilute the bar qualification to make people feel better like everything else in California. And here, the third top rated comment relates to a finding that the legal profession has a very serious problem with implicit bias. The legal system purports to be a justice system, having a pervasive issue with implicit bias leads to a great deal of legal injustice. So those are the six top areas. We have really, I I I don't know if we scratched the surface and there's something much deeper down below this that we can dig into more. We've had the time to scratch the surface, whether there's more or not, it remains to be seen. But this is the results of what we found from putting a survey out to the public and for about a week.
And Doug, how many actual individuals responded?
You know, that's a good question. I was looking through the numbers and the the number of thoughts is not the same as the number of people. So so people can provide multiple thoughts. I don't know the exact number. I can get back to you with that, but it's it's less than the total number of thoughts and much less than the total number of ratings.
Can you give us a little feedback on what you saw and heard in these responses versus what we saw and heard and in so many of the other responses we heard from stakeholders, you or Leah? But you you've certainly called it out, which I think was important.
Are you going to do that, Doug? I think I asked you to look at how this aligns with the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't think it does align that well. It's it's I and I think that this gets to the the challenge of separating out our our public. I think in many cases, it's, I mean, there's some values issues that align. Accountability, transparency, access to justice. I think that there's values aligned, but in terms of the specifics, it doesn't appear to align to me because I don't think that the public has the specific knowledge. I think that, you know, this issue of who the public is, I think oftentimes we have kind of a latent public that we're protecting. They're they're not yet necessarily our public until they need an attorney. At which point they are our our public. And so you need to probate your estate. You need to, you you need a family law attorney. You've got a dependency issue, whatever it might be. These, these are when the public kind of become our public for purposes of the work that we did.
Yeah.
I would just, sorry, I think that the there is alignment in terms of, and and maybe this is Doug, what you're calling values, but the need to focus on how our agency is perceived and do we have legitimacy? Because I see that coming up in these comments. That the themes around access, I think are very similar to what we heard. There's a lot of vast differences among our different constituencies as to how you increase access. But the idea that it is an issue and one that the state bar needs to address, I think is pretty consistent. So I, you know, I I maybe I think they're very in the weeds on admissions, but even there looking at alternative pathways, that's something that does come up from other stakeholder groups as well. So I think maybe there there there's a bit more consistency, all even though there's not a great deal of understanding by many folks about what state bar does.
Or what your scope of work is, Ms. Dailen.
Thank you for that, Doug. I think probably this is one way where we have to really get to know who our public are, how we can reach out to our public and how to engage our real public. I don't know if, you know, doing qualification as far as not a lawyer or not a licensee to answer, but but probably this is either not just for this, but for future and how to engage our communities. The the different types of communities where we can, we would have them in the database and have them send it to their community, their own databases. I don't know if we have such a thing where we have, we have, you know, the a nonprofit organization, you know, immigrants or migrants and and all those things that we can just really use them as our allies to be able to help us get to our programs and be able, not just for surveying, but for other programs and for relaying our, you know, policies and communicating to them. I think this is one way also where we should really probably put it top of mind and how we can truly bring it down to the love to our public.
Our public, okay. Mr. Duran?
So that concept of our public struck a chord with me because I I think it may be aspirational to say that our public is people who need a lawyer. I think it's more reality that our public is people who have lawyers that are not being responsive or not being ethical or not being competent, right? And even then, those folks sometimes just don't even know where to start. And that's, you know, that's struck me as Dad was saying.
That's, that's a really good point. And, you know, also the thing that we found from the closing the Justice Gap Working Group is the people who don't know that they need a lawyer, they do need a lawyer because that's a huge part of the gap is the 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 knowledge gap.
It it might even be an a a question to answer in the the plan itself, and that is who is our public? I think it's a great question. Our public. Go ahead, Doug, sorry.
No, that was all.
Any other questions or feedback for Doug? Okay. So Doug, you know, this next part, you are really going to have to help me with. But we want to start to hear from you, all of you. You've you've heard a lot. We've we've put a lot of information in front of you. And want to start to get to that conversation about what the strategic priorities ought to be for the next five years. I'm going to give you a handful of my own high level takeaways just to tee up this discussion and give you a chance to to start to get your thoughts formulated. I would say first, what I noticed and heard particularly in in the conversations that I had to take play, take part in, there's a great deal of faith in the staff and and in the leadership. And I think that's a, that's a very good position to be in as an organization. We've, we've seen instances where there's not, that's not the case. Second, and you all teed this up a little bit yesterday, there's still some lingering, maybe even more than some lingering confusion around how the roles and responsibilities of the bar have changed since 2018. So that's just something to keep in mind, maybe not necessarily something to address in a goal, but something to to keep in mind. And that may go to some of that simplification that you all talked about in clarity, to to use Ms. Shelby's word that we need to be sure is is a part of this plan. The other thing is more external. There's a little bit of a generational transition going on just in in sort of broader society. And a lot of organizations are feeling those growing pains. And so, you know, this piece around making sure that you've got an electronic copy of this document as well as a hard copy of this document. Thinking about technology and when and how we 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 use it and leverage it, it's going to be really important. And that ought to be taken seriously. Couple of people, more than a couple of people have suggested that there's a need for an elevator pitch. And I'm pretty biased as a professional communicator, but I strongly agree here. And I think that just having that narrative is so important. Again, not a part of the the plan, but just for us to think about as we start this work. And then I think the last thing is that we've got a got some work to do relative to our relationship with with the legislature. And one of the folks that we spoke with really, really good comment just made the case that they're not allowed to practice in the legislature anymore. Really truly small, small. Making sure that there's real clarity around to help improve there. So those are sort of my high level thoughts. And I did that just to buy myself some time, Doug, while we get set up for this next piece where we start to get some feedback. And are we going to use this? Are we going to change screens to do this?
Well, well, we can run this directly off of this screen. But, you know, are you going to use the first three prompts and then we're going to go to the floor? Okay. I'm queued up for them. So you tell me which one you want to start with and and I'll tell people what they need to do.
Let's go just with the the first question more generally, and that was the one around important takeaways. Is that the first one?
I've got it, yeah.
So we might need you to give us a little bit of a tutorial on what to do.
Absolutely. So you are going to find in your inbox, a lot of this exercise right now is going to run through your inbox. And what you're going to find in your inbox is an email that looks a lot like this. And it's got a link. And it has a prompt with regard to what are the key takeaways? And so you heard about Thought Exchange. Now you get to play with Thought Exchange. So you follow that link. And Leah, if you're looking for that, if you're looking for that email, you're not going to find it. I'm I'm sending only to the trustees. I saw that look on your face like no, it's it's only for the trustees. And you're going to follow that link and you're going to be given the prompt with regard to takeaways. And we encourage you to type in as many takeaways as come to your mind, important things. This is partly, I think, Cassandra was hoping to get a single key takeaway. I don't think the platform really works that way. It's driven by the consensus and by the opinions of others with regard to the thought. So go ahead and enter as many key takeaways as you find that you have gotten from these day and a half of training. And then once what, once you're done entering your thoughts, you'll be prompted, are you done entering thoughts? Or if you're done, you click on the done button. And then you'll be fed other people's thoughts and get and asked to rate those on a, on a scale of one star to five, five being the one that you agree the most with, one being the one you agree the least with. But you'll be fed other people's thoughts. And as you start doing this, then I'm going to share a screen and something super special is going to pop up where we're going to see in real time what these thoughts are. So this is the first of these. We're going to give it a give it a go, see how it works and stand by as I prepare to share the screen showing you the the presentation or the way that these thoughts are coming over in real time.
Is everybody clear on the instructions?
No, I have no, I have no idea what you just said, Doug. You're gonna have to say that again.
My apologies. I'm my apologies.
Screen while you're doing that and everybody should find their link and go to the link and then it'll make more sense.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And the the email was sent to the mass distribution list that we have for you. So you can find it in your personal email. You can find it in your state bar email. I'm gonna, and this is how I'm going to send the following links for for subsequent subsequent iterations of this exercise.
And is everybody now pretty clear? And does everybody have their link? Okay.
We'll just see what happens.
How are you doing, Mr. Tony?
I'll give it a shot.
Are you going to share the screen, Doc?
Yep, just getting there. So this is these are two users who are in and who have offered thoughts. These are the thoughts over here. We haven't yet had thoughts rated. We now have three users in, so three of the trustees are in and have provided four thoughts. And these are the thoughts over here that they provided. Uh, these are entirely anonymous. I have no way of tracing any of the comments back. I should have mentioned that at the outset, but
Doug, I think that that may be a little challenge for Bagley King. So do we have a way of having people enter their name, who they are?
Um, no, I don't think we do.
All right. So maybe we can have
They just write their name.
Yeah, I have a suggestion. I'm I'm just putting my initials. I'm just putting my initials after what I'm typing. So you'll see RD at the end of mine.
So what about, what if we've already submitted and do it again?
I mean, I think maybe you just take ownership of it, ownership of it as we're discussing it.
So again, what we're seeing populate here are purple trustees, blue thoughts. And what we haven't yet seen is because we don't have enough thoughts in the system yet, but we will shortly is once the thoughts are done being generated, the sharing of the thoughts and the rating of the thoughts, and then these will start to get ranked based on what the the consensus is with regard to the thoughts that are 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 most highly regarded.
And are you able to scroll down? Thank you. Okay.
Okay, now we've got our first thought that's been rated here. And this same person has now rated a second thought.
Got it. Okay.
And so now
So I have to ask, I'm sorry, if I'm doing this on my phone, I'm not seeing other folks' thoughts, and so I don't know how to rate.
You have to go to rate thoughts. You have to select off the menu. There was share thoughts, which is where you were entering your thoughts.
All right, great. Thank you.
And we don't want to rush you, but we also want to push you to be as aggressive and assertive about getting your thoughts down as possible. This is starting to gel.
And, you know, I can set a timer on this if we want to fix an endpoint.
Um, I'm going to say maybe two more minutes on this part. And I'm probably gonna, after that, we'll go to my question three, Doug.
Okay.
Are you supposed to rate your own thoughts?
I I I believe you can. We, when we tested this last night, we were saying that with a small group, you do get fed your own thoughts back. So don't be modest. Go ahead and give it a good rating.
Now, again, I, we're not, we don't have the luxury of being on email. So can you scroll down a little bit so we can continue to see the thoughts as they come in?
Of course. And in fact, I think this is that we can skip the sort of spider diagram and just look at I believe it's possible to rate thoughts without entering thoughts also. If if you happen to be one of these purple trustees out here on the edges who have not provided any thoughts, you should still be able to have access to other thoughts to rate them.
And we will be able to clip and hold on to these thoughts, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, it looks like having set the timer, it is now closed.
Okay. Scroll down slowly just to take a look. Okay. Okay. Did everybody like that exercise? This is helpful?
I liked it.
Mr. Tony's reglet his nose. It's, it is, again, we've, we're embracing technology, sir. That's, that's, that's definitely going to be something we're all going to have to do. I know, I'm kind of old school too.
It it's my bias against social media. I don't do social media, so this feels like social media, voting on stuff. You know, on what people say and people just giving a real quick response without taking the time to think, I didn't like the speed of this.
Okay, fair enough. Let's try one, let's try another one. And that, and we'll take that into account. And is there a second email, Doug?
There, there is. And I just wanted to confirm, are we talking the challenges exercise?
Let's do challenges, but let's make that really quick as well. And then spend most of our time on the third.
Okay, a set, a, a, another email has been sent. Same basic drill. There's a link. You can follow the link. It will take you to a prompt asking you about key challenges facing the state bar. And while you're navigating to that, I'm going to navigate to the screen that will allow me to display what we're looking at and the work that you're doing, the comments that you input.
And try to keep your answers in that strategic space if possible, is is one thing I would ask. And I think we still want to make sure folks put their initials behind your statements.
Do we have a tamper going on this one?
We do not.
Yeah, I want to there we go. Let's do just two more minutes. Looks like it froze. The timer's not going anymore.
I wonder if that's because I browsed away.
Oh, there we go. All right.
And you said people couldn't multitask. It's machines that can't multitask. All right.
All right. If you could scroll a little bit so the rest of us who couldn't see could just take a look again.
With the legislature, adequately funding the discipline system.
Yep.
Reducing eliminated backlog and attorney discipline compliance, adequately adequately funding the discipline system.
Okay.
Improving stakeholder relationships, improving the discipline system and addressing funding gaps, not necessarily in this order. Legislature's lack of trust in the state bar, getting CTC confirmed. Reducing the backlog and partnering with the legislature to determine metrics that protect the public. Communicating an action plan and getting support for stakeholders, lack of resources. Prioritization, tailored messaging, relationship building. Securing the funding necessary to bring the backlog down. Doing the case prioritization system right and accepted. Increase diversity of attorneys to reflect California diversity. Strategies to increase legal resources to people in communities with greatest need that don't increase corporate profits, define its role with respect for the inclusion, access to justice. Backlog, backlog, backlog. Fate of the licensing professional efforts.
And everybody's participating, so that's good. That's helpful. Okay. Any comments or questions on that one before we go to the last one? Mr. Chair, you like this one?
Um, I like the fact that trustee Tony said he's not a fan of this, but he had a lot of comments in there, so that was good.
But I didn't vote on anything. I won't do the voting. I draw the line.
I like the, um, this sort of consensus of an idea or a focus on the backlog, the case processing standard. And when we think about benchmarks within the context of a five year strategic plan, for me, what's coming up is sort of front loading that work. And with the case processing standards development, we have that opportunity and focusing on the backlog. And then what does that doing so enable us to do? Right? Because it it gives us sort of room to do some other things if we can get our house in order there. So that's what came up for me.
Good. And again, I'm going to challenge you to, you know, go up into the sky a little bit, as I like to say, and do some blue sky thinking as we, particularly as we take this next prompt. So go ahead and send your email. If you have an
The final of these first three emails has been sent before we move on to actual strategic goals. And this prompt relates to state bar priorities.
And again, go up into the sky with me a little bit. Get less tactical and more around strategy and goal setting. Blue sky thinking, as I like to call it. You're sitting in an airplane. You're, you're over the Midwest and you've just got some time to do some big thinking. What, how should we be thinking about priorities over the next five years? At a high level.
Prompt. Should I just go ahead and set the timer at the outset, Cassandra?
Yes, please, please. Yeah.
Keep it, keep it at four?
Yep.
So, we have one person who's great, okay, there we go, there's a second person who's begun rating, it's one person who's rated a lot of thoughts, now is rated all of the thoughts. And now a second person has begun rating.
Well, we know who's not rating.
Right, we'll keep an eye out for that purple trustee. All right, time's up. So I think, you know, I think what I'm starting to see is some repetition, so maybe takeaways and priorities and challenges all kind of come together, but establishing relationship of trust with the collaboration with the legislature, funding for discipline program. Getting the trust and confidence of the legislature, improving stakeholder relationships, build relationships of trust and collaboration with other stakeholders. Invest in the discipline system, so instead of detracting from the work at the state bar, builds legitimacy and allows freedom for other projects. For my CTC, improving the discipline system, raising the visibility of state bar, better protect the public through proactive support for attorneys. Discipline regulation, pipeline and education, all underscored by relationship and coalition building. Distinguished state par for its past and from other organizations with bar in their name. Establishing better relationships with stakeholders, having an activist and engaged board, diversifying the profession. Opened strategy to address access to justice in rural areas that oftentimes serve diverse people and groups.
Okay. Where is she, any feedback from you on that segment, Leah?
No, just saying, great, there's a lot of overlap in the three.
Yeah. Saw that too, okay. So, any general feedback before we go to the next segment? Did you like that exercise? Any other comments there? Oh, good, okay, so Dag, it's going to get tricky for me again, but one of the things that we did ahead of this conversation as a team, as your working group team and on the staff side, is propose, or we're about to propose, four buckets for goals. And I think we want to put them up on the screen and then maybe get, again, get some feedback on each of the buckets, is that the way we were going to do that one, Dag, or can I talk about them first?
I'd have to create a slide to put them up on the screen, what I've done is I've created them in Thought Exchange. So they're set up in Thought Exchange to get feedback.
Okay.
Like, we should not go right into another thought exchange, so maybe we can just talk about them.
Yeah, because and they're not on, they're not on a they're not on a slide?
No, but I think that that can be remedied pretty quickly.
Actually, I have them on a one pager, if I can share screen.
You should be able to.
Okay, let me just do that. At least I think I can. How's that?
Looks good.
Okay. So here are the four buckets we're proposing to place our goals in. And you will see some tactics and strategies underneath each, but what we want to get your at least initial reaction to is the four enforcement, transparency and accountability, innovation, and of course, DEI. We've also taken the liberty of at least beginning to just define each of those areas that we might call out as goals for five years. Probably want to get, we certainly don't want to spend this time wordsmithing, but we do want to just get some feedback around the definitions. And you'll start to see, I mean, if they were physical buckets, you know, there will be several tactics and several of the, many of the ideas that some of you just put up on the screen that would fit, and I'm starting to make some notes myself, into those buckets, but let me first maybe solicit some feedback on the four areas first. Enforcement, transparency and accountability, innovation and DEI. Any thoughts or initial feedback from the board, and now I'm not able, of course, to see everybody, so if my hand is up, let me know. I'll start with Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Cassandra. What's interesting to me is that this is a, I'm trying to get, I was trying to get on the phone, sorry about that. This is, this is a different group of words than we've been discussing most of the morning and day. All important words for sure, but taking us in a sort of in a different direction, I'm not sure if that was the intention of this next part. But it just, there's a different phraseology than what I feel we've been focusing on.
Give me, then, your four words. Because that's a fair reaction.
Sure, relationships, accountability, results, funding.
Okay. And I'm just looking through any other, thank you.
Sonia here.
Good, please, Sonia, because I can't see.
I think I would also, I have the same thoughts, but would also include you know, being proactive, education such that the attorney will not have to be in a disciplined, you know, it's more like, let's do some more efforts really in and probably that's enforcing that we can put education, and that's maybe into the weeds so much, but it's all enforcement, but more for me, so what are the proactive things that we can do to so that these people will not fall into that?
Okay.
To being disciplined.
I'm gonna I'm gonna say I at least have some support for the word enforcement. Okay. I see Mr. Soul. And Mr. Cisneros next.
Well, I was just going to come in sideways on the word enforcement.
Okay.
And probably, the two words, the two words that I think jump out at me that kind of echoing what the chairman and others have said are the words enforcement and innovation. Enforcement, just because I think public protection may be more in line with how we sort of think about the act of discipline and those sorts of things like that. And then innovation, just because for some reason from what we're seeing in responses from some of our stakeholders, that seems to be something that they react to quite negatively, and I don't necessarily know that I have, I have the word in mind, the substitute for for innovation, but that strikes me as something that that others have reacted to in a pretty sort of vigorous manner.
Let me go, so two things, you say potentially using the words public protection instead of enforcement, that makes sense to me. Say a little bit more about the response to innovation, just say a little bit more about that.
You know, what we're seeing with, not only whether it's paraprofessionals or the access to justice, you know, sort of the sandbox, regulatory sandbox and whatnot, that those are innovations and, or they've been couched as innovations that folks have reacted to, and I just think we should, I think there's a way to describe them and maybe not use that word.
Okay, got it. I think I saw Mr. Cisneros' hand next, please.
Thanks, Cassandra, I'll just add, I think I agree with a lot of the comments, I definitely was thinking public protection as maybe broader and better word than enforcements. And innovation, I think, is is, I think, yeah, it feels a little techie and like an easy go-to. And I think that might cause people not to take it seriously enough. I think that when I read the description behind access to legal services, apps for legal services, you know, better processing around the admission process and that type of thing, it just sounds like it's about doing, you know, delivering services better. Delivering services in a more understandable and easy to access way. I think I might call that like accessibility, engagement, improvements, things like that, innovation just sounds like, I'm just, you know, throwing some computer lingo in there for the hell of it. I'm also a little bit excited about the topic that right now is called transparency and accountability. I think it could be broader, I think it could almost be closer to success and through things like transparency, accountability, and some of the things that are called out, you know, stronger relationships with stakeholders, you know, better continual process improvement, better relationships with our funders. To Ruben's point earlier, funding is something we keep talking about over and over again, no matter what we're trying to do, and I don't think it deserves to be a top, you know, bullet point here, but it certainly is key to our success and our ability to do a lot of these things, so this might be a place where that success is going to be driven by things that are that we could do better, the state bar could do better, but also things that could be delivered by stronger relationships and stakeholders.
So let me go back to your first comment, because I like both, and very much I like this feedback. I made a note to myself in the course of our discussions about changing that piece around innovation to access to justice.
Yeah.
Because I've heard you all use that term so much in these last two days, how does that float with you?
I think, I think that makes a lot of sense, it rings true to, I think, the community, both the employees and the stakeholders, I think that that's what people are looking for this organization to deliver. And I think, but I think obviously, you know, it's a term that's been around for a long time, someone needs to say, well, how are you going to improve that? What are you going to do different? Different, and, but I think that's the right goal to be shooting for.
Okay, all right, you know, I will hang on to your thought around success and hear from a couple other folks, Mr. Tony, please.
Thank you. I like the idea of categorization of, you know, of, you know, what we're trying to get done. I guess I kind of feel that it's premature to start categorizing and that we should be spending more time talking about the priorities, I also don't know where some of these elements listed, we have not talked about at all, so I also, I don't know, maybe they should be discussed, but they should be discussed first. I really think we need to spend more time talking about what we want to do, what we think is important, more brainstorming, and then do the categorization after we've come up with the list and let the categorization be driven by the content that we want rather than us developing content to put into categories.
Appreciate it, and we'll just tell you that where a lot of this came from, again, was from the private conversations with the staff on, you know, on our end, and a lot of this is also meant to start to just help us put some parameters around it, this is not hard and fast, it's not meant to even remotely be final, but it gives us something to react to, so we start to stop doing this and start to bring a little bit of form to it, but all the comments are helpful, and again, remember this is not meant to be, we're not going to finish this day and have a final we're not going to have a final plan with a bow around it, this is really to get your feedback, so it's really actually very helpful if we can keep it going.
Cassandra, I just wonder if it might be useful to take out the bullets, because I do think they're kind of distracting right now. At least to just talk about the categories that, you know, if these are the right categories, it sounds like they're not, because I, because I agree that we're not anywhere near looking at bullets. Okay.
Mr. Duran, Mr. Chairman.
I think that was a useful suggestion, Leah, thank you. Couple of thoughts, so I think one of the reasons innovation didn't necessarily jump out at me initially is because it's something that I already take for granted with respect to this organization, largely because of the work that Leah has pushed over the past several years and certainly since she's come back. And so to me, innovation certainly is an important piece of what we're doing and what we should be doing. And it's just, it's just a given, and so that's why it wasn't necessarily foremost in my mind. I did want to expand a little bit on the funding word that I brought up earlier. And this is sort of echoing what I've heard trustee Shelby talk about in the past, and that is it's really resources, right, it's certainly, it's true that financial resources are critical to our achieving our objectives, but our relational resources, our staff are resources. So let's, I would just offer that as a refinement of my fourth word.
So let me, so let's talk about resources, and again, this is meant to be fluid. If we were in a room together, we'd have a lot of white paper up around the wall and be writing a lot of this stuff down that way, I'm taking notes, but I'm also want to try to have this part that we're looking at reflect some of your thoughts here, so Mr. Chairman, where do you see the resource question at least potentially falling in one of these four areas, if at all?
The transparency and accountability success, I feel like the more we are successful at our core mission of protecting the public, reducing the backlog, et cetera, building relationships, the more, the more trusting the legislature and the state auditor are going to be when we make requests for adjustment in our fee structure. It's success building on success.
Okay. Do we need to call out the word resource, resources?
I mean, I've identified it as an important word for me, I would certainly want to hear what the other trustees have to say.
Okay, Mr. Soul, you've had your hand up for a minute.
Appreciate you allowing me to have a go back here. The one thing that I'm not sure is embedded in any of these the headings right now is our administration of the bar exam. the headings right now is our administration of the bar exam. And how we go about doing that. And I don't know if it, if it, if it's, if it needs to be. But it, you know, in, in listening to some of the statistics the other day of how many folks take the bar exam and, uh, how, sort of how critical that is to, to various aspects of, of, uh, public protection, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion, et cetera, et cetera. I just wasn't sure whether or not that was something that we should be considering to be embedded in, in, in one of these headings.
So does that, um, I'm looking at the first bullet, word first bucket, um, proactively protects the public by maintaining high standards in attorney admissions. Do we need to say more than that?
At least to me, it felt like we should, but I, but I maybe, may not be thinking about it clear, um, correctly, since I'm, since I'm not an attorney.
Any other feedback there? Should we say more? All right, I'm going to come back to that. Uh, Mr. Tony's had his hand up and then I see a couple of others.
Uh, I, I'm going to defer until people who haven't spoken yet speak.
Okay. Let me see. Mr. Stallings?
Yeah. So just to echo Arnie's point there, um, I think admissions is a substantial portion of the consumer protection that the state bar offers. Um, and then I think there's also, I feel a lot of different calls and emails from people wondering different things about the state bar. And I think 50% of them have to do with the moral character, um, applications. And, uh, just different licensee, uh, type issues. So, hey, I just got sworn in. Uh, when can I expect my bar number? Um, so I think we shouldn't lose sight of, of being a very effective licensee, being effective at admitting people to the practice of law and then, um, the public protection aspect of the, uh, you know, of the, of the discipline system. So, I mean, I, I think that goes kind of in enforcement. But I think it could also be a standalone thing, because the other thing I don't see here is the, accreditation of law schools. Now, there's certainly a crossover with innovation and access to justice. So I could see it going both in public protection and, uh, access to justice.
Sorry. And Mr. Broughton?
Thank you. Yes, I too was taken with that word innovation and I immediately thought of the issue that we're going to have to be dealing with, um, in a while with respect to some of these projects we've taken on. The other thing is when I look at these, what, what we have here, public protection, transparency, innovation, innovation, diversity and inclusion, all we've done is put up bullet points that are our mission statement, which is the State Bar of California mission is to protect the public and includes primary functions of licensing, regulation and discipline of attorneys. That's your first one. The advancement of the ethical and competent practice of law, that's also probably your first or second. Um, and support the efforts for greater access to and inclusion in the legal system. So it seems to me that all this is a sort of a bullet point of the mission statement that we've already got. To me, I think goals are something more specific. And I happen to agree with Mr. Tony that we probably are putting the cart before the horse and should be finishing our discussions, which drives our goals for the next five years, which is kind of what we did when we got the first five-year plan. So I'm not seeing that this is any, uh, reflection of the, the exercises that we just did. Or that it's anything, quite frankly, other than the mission statement that already directs the state bar.
Okay. I'm going to take your point and Mr. Selig.
Yeah. So, well, you know, I think Mark has kind of hit the nail on the head, uh, is, uh, is my big picture reaction that, there are some things in here that aren't in the mission statement, to be sure. But, so that's my big picture comment. And then, uh, uh, for the second bucket, someone mentioned results. I think that would be a better title for the second one. In other words, you know, like Yoda, there's no try, there's only do. So the idea of that is we want to measure results objectively. And then, um, the third bucket, I think, is kind of mixing up two different ideas. One is, uh, I mean, really, it says access to justice, but the text is about internal operation of the bar, I think. So that's just kind of a muddle. I don't even know what we're doing there. So this is just my thoughts.
Okay. Appreciate that. Um, going to go to Michelle B. And then I'm going to come back to you, Leah.
Thank you. Um, I apologize for not being on screen. I am declining quickly. Um, but the, when I look at the categories, what came to mind for me was oversight, accountability, results and resources. Those were the, that kind of came top of mind to me. And, you know, as I hear Mark, Mark squared their comments, um, I certainly think it can be approached from two different ways. If we're going down this route, I would say oversight, accountability, results and resources are kind of how I see our goals. But, um, if we get into more kind of strategic conversation, I'm comfortable doing that as well.
Thank you. And I hope you, um, are getting, are resting while you're off screen. Um, Ms. Wilson?
I was just going to say that I think this is really challenging, because our current strategic plan is much more organized around our functional areas. And I think that's what I'm hearing from some members of the board, like we have goals around admissions. We have goals around increasing access to legal services, diversity. Yes, you know, Mark, drawing from the strategic plan, this sort of construction organization. And then where that varies is there is a goal around communication and relationships in the current strategic plan that's not in the mission statement. And there were some goals around separation of the state bar, not in the mission statement. This has some values as well as functions, right? You know, we have a function around D E and I, function being it's part of our mission statement. It's also a value. Innovation and transparency, accountability, these are values in the way we do our work, not necessarily our functional responsibilities, then enforcement of public protection is obviously functional. So I think that's one of the challenges in this conversation as well is like, are the, are we, is our strategic plan oriented around our values? And then the initiatives that we are going to undertake to advance those values? Or is it organized around our functional responsibilities? So Brandon, when you say, I don't see law school, you know, oversight in here, where would it fit? It may be that everything we do doesn't fit in the strategic plan. And that, that doesn't mean we don't do it. It's just not part of, you know, sort of what we're calling out as the high level goals for the next five years. But I just think that's kind of the tension, um, because this looks really different than what we have. And it does differ from the conversation we've been having, which I think is more about like our relationships, how to define who we are and what our value is. And, um, certainly the conversation around increasing access to legal services. So.
And, and I think I'd appreciate that, Leah. The other thing I think I would say is strategic plans, as Travis shared with you, can be a lot about, very, very aspirational, but also measurable. Um, but for me, they answer the question quite simply, what do you want to do? What do you want to do over the next five years? And and then you will fill in with the operations piece around how you do it. A lot of that will be what you're already doing. But what do you want to do over the next five years is the question that I, I, that we, I'd like to try to see answered. And all the conversations that we've had over the last, um, couple of days are certainly going to inform how we fill in these buckets. But we do want to, as I said earlier, put some parameters around. What are your, what are your four or five areas of priority? I'm losing track. So let me see. I think I see Mr. Tony's hand again.
Yes, thank you. The, um, I guess I, um, wanted to start responding to, uh, Chair Duran's, uh, comment, um, around resources. How do we talk about resources? And I think the most important way to talk about resources would be to really, uh, commit ourselves and to put in writing the state bar's commitment to the strategic deployment of resources in the most efficient way possible to achieve our goals. I think that's what people want from us. I, I don't think it quite frankly makes sense to have a strategic goal of getting more resources. Okay. Nobody's going to give you more resources if you cannot demonstrate the strategic deployment in a cop, in, in an efficient, um, manner. That's what we need to focus on. So that would be my, um, uh, recommendation to respond to, uh, Chair Duran's, uh, question about how do we address the issue of resources? And I, and I still believe that having these categories up impedes our ability to have a discussion about what it is we want to do, what we think is important. The categories can come afterwards and the categories can come organically and be labeled organically after we've got these. But I, I find this not useful to have these up.
Mr. Broughton, sorry?
Once again, I agree with Mr. Tony. I don't know what's happening here. I looked at, I looked at these when I first looked at them and I thought, what in the heck are we doing here? I, this completely confused me as to what we have just done for the last day and a half and so forth. With respect to Mr., you know, when I read or saw the first, um, five-year plan or whatever it was, he talked about visions of success. And the question there was, what do you, what do you want to have happen? Where do we want to get? And that's what Mr. Tony is talking about. And so I put down, um, we want 90% of all claims completed within the statutory time limits in terms of regulation. We want as many people as possible to have access to attorney and to attorneys in legal system. Three, we want more representative, diverse licensee population. To me, those are aspirational goals that go into a five-year plan. Or maybe I'm just completely missing what we're supposed to be doing here. Because we have, we have values, our values are stated in our mission statement. So to me, uh, this whole thing is a little bit confusing.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry to confuse you. If we were in a room together, I, I think I would say again that some of this would wind up in a lot of paper and a lot of places. And we just don't have an effective way to sort of get everybody's thoughts down. Some of it's here, some of it's here. And again, some of this, some of why we put these words up just to get us started was to start to put some parameters around our goals. So let me turn the question back to you and say, what do you want to do over the next five years? That isn't represented in these categories? And I'll turn the question, ask the same question to Mr. Tony.
Well, maybe I'll turn it back on you and say, um, is there not some specific goals that can be derived from the information that received from all of the trustees over the last, you know, day and a half? Goals that I just gave to you, not something that are aspirational goals that you can break down and measure and accomplish within the next five years?
Most definitely. I, I, for me, the most important, uh, in, in, to your point, the first bucket, if you will, calls out a lot of what you do already. That's a part of your mission. What probably resonates with me the most is the second. And, and in particular, this piece around, um, consumer focused strategies and communications. Or as Mr. Tony said, strategic deployment of resources and in particular strengthening relationships amongst stakeholders. That, that would be where, that would be where I'd start to answer your question. Now, Leah, one of the things you asked us not to do, and I'm, and I'll take your lead here, is not to use the thought, um, exchange process to go through some of this. Do you still feel like we should or shouldn't?
No, I guess I'm feeling like what we're hearing from the board is that there's a disconnect between what they're seeing here and all the discussion we've had. So I kind of like the idea of taking this down. And maybe we have, um, I, I don't know what the best way to do this is in, um, Zoom. We could have nothing up, but somebody, I'm happy to be the somebody, really taking notes about the conversation. And then at some point putting something up. But I think just having some real conversation with the trustees about where do you want to be in five years? What do you see as our priority areas of focus? To start trying to get us something that we can crystallize. And I, I get, I'm happy to take the notes so that you can actively facilitate that Cassandra or whatever. But that's kind of what I'm thinking we should do at this point is just kind of get some dialogue going. But that's just me. So, and I'm not a member of the board.
In, in full disclosure is where I wanted to start, but we did, we got stuck on the thought exchange idea. So I'm, I'm fine with that. Let's go back to that. I am happy to do a course correct and start to talk and, and do what I like to do. And that is go around the Zoom room and just have the trustees share. And even if it is a repeat of what you shared on the thought exchange, um, give me a sense of priorities. What do you want to do in the next five years? That this is what's, this is the kind of conversation I'd rather have. And I'm going to start again with the chair. And I know Travis is covering me on notes as well.
Sure. Thanks. Uh, I, I think in, uh, in the next five years, we need to have a handle on the backlog. It's just, we, we can't escape that that is, uh, a measurement that lots of folks are interested in. Certainly, um, it is a measure of how well we're protecting the public. Um, I don't know that I can necessarily put a number to the tracking of, you know, the percentages. That's, I'm, I've never been good at math. But making, you know, significant, um, significant improvement there. Um, in, in five years, are we, are, I want to have, I want the, the board as a, as a group of people. They'll probably mostly be different people then, but I want them to have, um, you know, an effective, functioning, good relationship with, with the legislature or with the legislative staffs, with the judiciary and, and the other important committees in the legislature that we have to work with, um, on a day-to-day basis or on a regular basis at least. I want to see, um, a more diversified profession. You know, I want to see more men and women of color, um, and, um, more socioecon, socio-economically disadvantaged people coming into the profession, right? That's an important, that's an important piece of where our state needs to go. Those are just initial thoughts.
Okay. That's three. Good. Mr. Tony?
Thank you. Um, what, what I would request is I, I, I do want to, um, I, I do have some thoughts. But, um, I'd like to ask the chair, since we've been meeting without a break for, uh, two hours and 40 minutes, if maybe we could have a break and I could come back and be first, if that's okay?
That'd be great. Do we want to do a regular break or a stretch break?
What's the difference?
We'll play a video.
Yeah, no, let's do a regular break, like give folks a chance to get up and move around and take care of, um, take care of business. Let's say, um, 15 minutes?
15. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Don't know. Zoom will allow you, once he's got that document up to, because it's also important that we see each other. So I don't know if most of you know, there's that little line between where the, Dag, put your, your doc back up for a second. There should be a line that you sort of between Dag's screen and everybody else's screen where you can sort of move, make, make that sheet of paper larger or smaller. But in making it a little bit smaller, give us a chance to see each other. Does everybody see what I mean? If you don't, and I, so I just, it's important to me to be able to see. We think it's important for you to see each other. But we also want to start to get some notes as though we were in the room.
And Cassandra, just for those who may not have that already set up, if you go to the top right corner of, of your Zoom screen where it says view, you want to select side-by-side gallery. And then, and then you can also move, move it the way you suggested.
Yep. Does everybody understand that? So it gives us a chance to see each other, but we'll still see what we're taking down. And Mr. Stallings, you have your hand up, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to get in line behind Mark.
Got it, okay. All right. So you will see then that we've got Mr. Chair's remarks already down. The way this would typically work is we get everybody's feedback and we'll start to see some themes develop. And, and we'll take it from there. So let's keep going and go with Mr. Tony, who we were going to hear from right before the break.
Thank you. So I, I want to make sure that we think about this question of, think of two aspects. When it comes to the question of attorney accountability, there's one aspect of attorney accountability that has to do with the attorney discipline system and that we've talked a lot about. And how to become more efficient in processing attorney complaints and reducing the backlog. We've talked a lot about that. But I think there's a flip side to that. And that flip side is to recognize that what, whenever a person, a client complains about an attorney, it's already a failure. Okay, there's already been a failure. And that part of what we want to do is to make sure that the bar has, does more attorney support to prevention, is what I'm trying to say. We spend a lot of time on prosecution and yes, discipline is important, but we also need to spend time with prevention. As, so that when we're looking at the discipline system, it's not only disciplining attorneys that have complaints against them, but what can we do in terms of support, education? To echo what some of the other trustees have said, for attorneys, what kind of accountability? What kind of reporting requirements we should consider increasing? You know, which, you know, you know, which we have some work already happening on, you know, and particularly around client trust accounts where we know that's a big issue. And it's not limited to a single individual, but there's a systematic issue we ought to be dealing with. So I, I, I think that's a key thing I want to say. Of course, I have many other things, but for now, that's what I wanted to say.
So I hear you saying attorney support, education and prevention. Prevention of what? Complaints?
No, prevention of breaking the law.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Stallings, you said you wanted to go next.
All right, thank you. So we've, we've heard about reducing the backlog. And I think that reducing the backlog really comes down to a resource issue. And so I think we really need to take a hard look at reallocating resources that have been entrusted to us, whether through the fees, the licensing fees, or any potential sale of assets down the road. And I think we need to invest back into the discipline system to, with the sole goal of reducing the backlog through efficient processing of complaints. The timely investigation of those cases. Consistent resolutions. And then effective litigation at trial. And then develop, you know, continue to refine and develop the excellent work of OCTC, you know, the strides that they've made to modernize the, the discipline system using the technology that they have. I think there's, there's ways to continually refine and be, be more efficient.
Okay.
So that'd be my top one. And then this isn't necessarily like a second priority, but just one that I really want to keep on the radar is access to justice in rural areas.
And I know what you mean by that. But how? Just curious.
Through a, through a strategy involving a new program that would either be a scholarship or a loan repayment type program that would incentivize lawyers, especially lawyers who are from particular rural areas, to stay in their community and to meet the needs of the diverse populations of those rural communities.
And is this also a resource issue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Got it? Anything else?
That's it for now.
Okay, I see Mr. Saleh.
Thank you. So I jotted down some ideas. Restore credibility. Which is a little vague, but I think we all know the issues there. Establish new metrics for the discipline system that are both acceptable to our oversight bodies and achievable with current or augmented resources.
Restore credibility with?
Public and the legislature.
Okay.
This is another big one, but make meaningful progress in closing the justice gap. And you don't have to type what I'll say now, but that, that covers a lot. We have some programs underway about which some legislative leaders have expressed concern. So that's going to be a subject of discussion, like how we go about that. The next one-
Is that a resource question?
No, I don't think so, Leah. I think that's a policy issue at this point.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's not primarily a resource issue.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Um, I don't know if this is too in the weeds. So Leah and Cassandra give me feedback, but I would include diversify senior leadership of the state bar. And the final one is synthesize work and recommendations arising from the special case audit, which you have to write this down, Cassandra, is the Girardi audit, with recommendations from the ad hoc commission on the discipline system.
Okay.
And here again, I'll expand on that, but you don't have to write this part down that Leah has noted. We have two groups that are working on recommendations for the discipline system. And one, you know, arising from the Girardi situation is, is get tougher, be stricter. And there's a lot of work being done on the discipline commission that is a little bit contrary to that to improve both fairness and efficacy of the discipline system. You know, for example, shifting from, you know, not just focusing on discipline to protect the public, but also preventative work and rehabilitation type efforts to avoid repeat offenses. So that's kind of a big, I think that's ultimately going to be a board task. And Leah, if you have any views on that, I think so. I think the board's going to, it's going to be the board's job to sort that out at the end of the day.
Right.
I agree with you and I, yeah, I'll just say that for now.
That's it.
Thank you. Straightforward. I'm going to try to go in what I think is order. So Ms. Chin?
No, I've been jotting stuff down and I have been trying to phrase it in, because I think it helps me think in terms of high level, big picture. Where would we like to get to? I really liked that first example of a strategic plan that you showed for Calsters or Calpers where it talked about, you know, we would, this is the organization we would like to be five years in the future. And so I've sort of phrased my ideas in those terms.
Good.
Um, one, and this, you'll see a lot of overlap with what you've heard already. Um, one is that the public really views and understands the state bar as an access, as a resource for access to justice. So when people think of, boy, I really need help, they turn to the state bar and, you know, to build on Brandon's idea of ensuring access to justice in rural areas and other underserved areas. I think we need to ask ourselves, for example, does the current website serve that goal? You know, you go to the lawyer referral site and it's grouped by county. Well, given how well remote working has worked and given how well we've been able to work while, you know, just isolated in our homes and offices, is it, does it really make sense to isolate things by county? Or can we be providing legal services over the internet? I know that in the healthcare field, people are really talking about the growth of telemedicine. Now that you can really effectively deliver healthcare services in many instances through Zoom appointments. So I would like the Calbar to be looked at as a resource for access to justice.
Okay.
Um, second, I would like, and I'm, I'm not quite sure how to phrase this, but if, if the organization could become an organization that attorneys, so the attorneys who we regulate, think of the Calbar as a resource for them. And I want to echo something Mr. Broughton said yesterday. For many of our colleagues, and this goes for virtually every single one of my colleagues, they have no idea the depth and breadth of what the state bar does. To them, there are three times when they touch the state bar. One is when they've taken the bar exam. And then every year, every few years, well, every year they pay fees. And then every few years, they have to put in their CLE certification. And for many attorneys, that is their only interaction with the state bar. And so they have no idea what they do, what the state bar does. And I think one of the ways to increase visibility, while at the same time achieving the goal of better protecting the public is through this proactive regulation, the preventative measures, the providing the, hey, you've got this problem. Here's a checklist, here's some, we're going to help you get it right. Rather than only focusing on, we're going to talk to you when you get it wrong.
Right.
And then the last item is I would love to see an office of the chief trial counsel that feels motivated and supported in achieving the goal of protecting the public. And I think you can get to an office that feels motivated and supported. I mean, one thing we've talked a lot about is resources. Another thing to keep our eye on though is making sure we're going after the most serious cases and prioritizing those. And eventually building a relationship of collaboration and trust with various stakeholders, including the legislature. That's what's going to get us to an office of chief trial counsel that feels motivated and supported.
Which of the three is going to require more resource? Or is this the matter of, as someone said earlier, just being more strategic about or reallocating of?
I'm not sure.
Okay. So that's the right answer, that's fine. Okay. Thank you. Again, I'm trying to go in order. I think Mr. De La Cruz was next.
Okay, thank you. So I'm building off of, of everyone's conversation here. I think one of the things that, you know, we continue to see is the ability to get the chief trial counsel approved by the legislature. So I think that should be part of the conversation or, or developing a plan or however, working with the legislature to make sure that that happens. I think stabilizing that the OCTC is going to be instrumental as we move forward in the next five years. Not that it's not stabilized, but I think, you know, perception is reality. And when you can't confirm someone, it's a problem. And so I think that that'll be key in the next five years. I, Haylen also mentioned that I also redone public understanding of what and how the state bar board supports the public, especially access to justice. That's the other point I have. Creating a program or implementing a program that encourages youth to become attorneys, especially underrepresented populations. That's another one. And then a healthy working relationship with the legislator, advocate groups and attorney associations to support and better protect the public.
Okay.
I missed the last one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll repeat it again. No word, Dag. Healthy working relationship with the legislator, advocate groups and attorney associations or associations to support and better protect the public.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dalen?
Thank you. Again, amplifying what everyone has already said. But for me, it's the backlog, getting that, you know, funded. And, and at the same time, I, we have always been saying, well, because it's really not the backlog or not this, it's just a little bit more of, we have been saying what we're saying and they're saying, and, and of course, that's they're saying what they're saying. But at least we have to have a meeting of, of the minds here where we can really work with alternatives so that we can have a more permanent solution to it or advancing really the, the, you know, the, the cases, the most serious cases and then bring down the backlog. So it's the same, same thing. Communicate, communicating effectively with the public in terms of access to legal services. Educating the public and how, why, when they need legal services and making sure that they know how to get it done and then be protected. So again, resources, website. And for me, more town hall-like, more being visible to the public, whether it's by social media. But there is the thing that, you know, to, to give the public a clearer understanding of what the state bar is. And then that the state bar is really for protecting them. And, and, and so, and, and I heard, you know, some people just don't know that when they really need legal service. So it's effective communication, better communication and visibility to the public. I'm a proponent also of support for our lawyers, preempting, being proactive in, and preventing them from committing any illegal acts. Some of them may not be really, I mean, it's because of when them being very professionals and everything, it's not ignorance. But, but, but the kind of thing that we can help prevent them commit any illegal acts. And also improving the relationship with the legislature and, and the court and being so that we will be more effective in getting all our policies and push our policies and- And being so that we will be more effective in getting all our policies and push our policies and getting. Um, better allies and. At the same time, identifying and working closely with, uh, the California Bar Association. In supporting the lawyers. So I think that's also in the supporting the lawyers and being able to. You know, probably collaborate with them in some programs that will really support the lawyers.
Your first, um. Was also this backlog, backlog piece. Are you? Um, in agreement with Mr. Stallings that. That's gonna require a reallocation of resource, or is there another way you see to do that?
Um, well, one is to really understand. Our position in, whenever we do, we explain to them why it is not, that the, that the backlog is caused by. You know, this hundred eighty days and all and, and that, and, and yet they are coming back with their own. Perception or their own analysis of why we are having this. So reallocation, we always say we need more. Uh, one, and also what is it really that we can? Have a better solution by having probably really. Probably what we're saying is not being heard or what we're saying, probably we have to. Um. To, to have, you know, a better way of letting them understand. Why we really need this. Why, why is it that we need these resources? Why we need more funding and all that? I mean, then we know the why it is, but the how we can effectively tell them exactly. It is because of, of, of all this impediments that we're not able to. Uh, you know, get a better solution to this one. I'm also thinking of probably creating a group that is for the less. Serious ones, you know, so that the cases will be heard and be dispensed of quickly. And probably that will, you know, getting that done. And getting the resource, getting the people who are working on those things to just get all those case, cases closed that can be closed so that. All those resources now can be moved to the more serious cases also. I think because of, you know, combining the, combining some, probably the lawyers working on the different cases. I don't know if I'm making sense, but, um, there are some cases that are maybe not being looked at because we're all concentrating on. The most serious ones, but there are also other cases that needed to be seen, needed to be. Uh, and I needed to be, uh, looked into and then dispense.
Leah, you've had your hand up for a while, Ms. Wilson.
Well, I don't wanna interrupt the process, but I just made a note around this term of access to justice. And it kind of goes to something that Mark Tony's called, uh, brought up a few times around who is our public and how do we define that? I want to have the board think about the term access to justice. Are we? Talking about justice writ large? Are we talking about access to legal services? Are we talking about access to lawyers? And those distinctions matter. Are we talking about access to the courts? A lot of the. Pushback we've gotten on our regulatory reform work, which is really about increasing access to legal advice. Which is a regulated activity, um, has been, well, you should be focused on increasing resources for court self-help centers. Where you should be for focused on increasing resources for court navigator programs. Those are. Uh, access to the courts, uh, which is quite different than access to. Lawyers. All of that falls under access to justice. And access to lawyers is very different than. Access to other actors who can deliver legal services. Um, we have non-lawyers in that space now delivering legal services, but not legal advice. And through regulatory reform, you can have non-lawyers providing legal advice. So I just think we need to kind of grapple with what we're talking about. And so it's kind of a, a definitional, uh, question, just another one to put on the table.
Well, and, and Ms. Chin talked about. I'm gonna say it, you know, leveraging technology to broaden access.
Right. And, and you can leverage technology, just have lawyers meet with clients via Zoom. That doesn't actually require regulatory reform. You can leverage technology in a way that'll. That implicates regulatory reform because you have tech-delivered legal service, legal advice. So there's like a lot. That's going on in this space. And I just do think it would be important for the board to really think about in five years. Where do we want to be or what are we talking about here?
That's a good comment. I'm gonna, I'll put a pin in that, come back to it and, um, call him Mr. Stallings and then Mr. Broughton.
Sorry, I think that, speaking of technology, I think technology automatically raised my hand. But no, so. To get to Leah's point. Um, I guess when I talk about rural areas, I think it really does encompass all those things. Uh, but in my hierarchy, I would say, um, access to legal advice. So expanding the number of lawyers in a particular geographic area and whether that's. Uh, you know, they're in the geographic area or that can service that particular geographic area. Um, I don't know if we need to make that distinction, but just ways to, uh, funnel legal advice to the most vulnerable communities.
So access to legal advice does or doesn't mean access to a lawyer?
Um. Uh, I would say yes, it does involve access to a lawyer.
Okay. Mr. Broughton and then Mr. Sisneros.
Thank you. Um, I wholeheartedly agree with exactly what Leo was talking about. In fact, you can see my paper here, you probably can't. Scribbled all over it is access to justice. And my question is that I wrote down here was, what does that mean? With respect to the state bar? What are we supposed to be doing as a state bar? We need to define that term. And define what it is that we're gonna, uh, do as a state bar. As a matter of fact, uh, some of the things we're talking about and some of the issues that we're gonna have to deal with. With programs that we already started were access issues. That now, um, we have to decide whether we can do them or not. So I really think, um. Defining what that means, because our mission statement says, support efforts for greater access to. The legal system. So what does that mean in terms of, um, it's gotta direct the, the various programs that we do. I really like what.
What does it mean to you? Let me just stop you and ask you, what does it mean to you?
Oh my God, you're, you're bringing back some PTSD issues for me because when, when we went through this. The five-year plan that we did before, five-year strategic plan that came sort of together with. Um, the, um, governance task force. We were creating a new organization. And essentially we were, we were breaking up the bar. We were going from a unified bar that included everything to essentially a regulatory agency. With the addition of this nebulous concept of access to justice. I mean, the medical board doesn't have to deal with those issues. Did the doctor screw up somehow? And so we go after his license. The board of registered nursing. You know, automotive repair, you go down any of these, they don't have the issues that we do with respect to having to deal with access to automotive repair. Um, so. I actually got in some difficulty with other board members because I said, if we are. A regulatory agency, we are not dealing with access issues. Those are issues. That should be dealt with by other organizations or other committees and so forth. Ultimately, we did include that portion in our mission statement that is now statutory. That says access to an inclusion in the legal system, but that's created so many problems for us that we're dealing with right now. Um, are we a regulatory agency or are we this hybrid? We're the hybrid right now. Um, but I would like to state that I, I think somewhere along the line, we have to say that. Um, that regulation of attorney discipline is our number one priority. And that, that is got to be it. Um, I like the way Sean presented it. If, if, if I were gonna say, what is access to justice? I hesitate to say this, but I'm going to. I would like to go to the legislature and say, you know what? Here in Fresno County, we used to have nine separate little justice courts. One of which was way out in Colinga, California. That's about seventy miles from the, the main courthouse downtown here. And there were all these little justice courts all over in Riverdale and Clovis and, and Fowler, that all of these people. These farm workers and these, these people who don't have cars and can't travel. That they could go to their justice court and those justice court had attorneys that were around them that would service their communities. We don't have those anymore. You closed all. And now these people have to come to the one single courthouse downtown and many of them can't get here. And they don't have attorneys out in their areas. You legislature should put that back. You need to put those things back to give those people access to justice. That's what I'd like to say. But we don't have, you know, we don't have the ability to do that. Um. So what does it mean to me? I think, I think it requires, as Leah pointed out, a greater discussion. What does it mean? And what does it mean for the bar? What can and can we not do? Um, when our main goal. Is the disciplining of attorneys. One other thing I wanted to say, I think something that should, should be included. Is to increase the amount that the legal services trust fund can pay back. Um, right now, you know, I think I don't have the exact numbers off my head. We're only about three, four million dollars a year and there's something like. Uh, Leah can get throughout the numbers, twenty million dollars of claims every year. And these poor people are waiting three, four, five years for reimbursement from the client security fund. It would be nice, uh, to, as a goal. To try and increase, uh, or, or make more. Quickly, um, our ability to pay back those claims. Um, with respect to the attorneys, um, being, um, so, so to speak, educated. That's why we have CLA. That's what we split off in, in large part, the education component. Um, and the trade association component for attorneys. So we could somehow interface with CLA. To accomplish some of those goals, the prevented goals, uh, that we talked about. So anyway, sorry to go a little far afield, but. You asked me about access and that's what happens.
Could I just make one quick observation with regard to this, this challenge? And I'm sorry for jumping the line, but you, you pointed to the challenge of being a regulatory body. That has this part of its mission, which includes access to justice and the potential contradiction contained within that. I, I thought it was quite interesting that the way that the legislature dealt with that conflict contradiction, and I, I, I'm quite sure that they saw it as well. Is that when they changed the language regarding our mission and business and profession six double zero one point one. They said, uh, for the longest time, it's a public protection is the number one priority of the state bar. And when they changed the language to add access and inclusion into that, they kept public protection as the number one priority of the state bar. But they said, public protection, which is understood to include access to an inclusion in the legal system. Is the number one priority of the state bar. So they, to, to some extent, they sort of punted by saying, there's no difference. It's the same thing. Public protection includes those, those elements. I just wanted to point that out because that is in the business of professions code. And that's how the legislature attempted to resolve that.
Well, you know, you remember that we, um, we went around, around, around the mole break motion. We didn't have it to begin with. I don't remember what came first, the statute. Or our, um, designation or.
Our designation came first.
So.
Legislature followed.
Yeah, so we, we, um. That, there was a big fight over that term and what, what it meant to the bar. And it still is. I still see it. I still feel it. Um. So I think, I do agree with, with Leah that we have to figure out what that means. We still don't know. Until we know, I, I, I don't know how we direct. Um, what we're gonna do. I mean, we have a problem right now that we've got to deal with. It came at us out of left field. That, that, that has to do with this. If. If that is one of our primary purposes to, um, promote greater access to justice. Those two particular programs were exactly designed to do that. To, to design to look at other ways to provide access to justice to people who didn't have it. So for example. The people out in Colinga that can't get to court. Well, maybe they can use an alternative. These are the things that we're studying. And now. We have to decide, are we gonna do that? Or are we gonna have to go back as directed and, and bolster up the, um. The discipline system. So we're, we have that problem. I, I don't know how to resolve it other than until we define it specifically. Uh, we're gonna have that problem over and over.
If it's a, if it is a priority and several of you have mentioned it, then we are gonna have to define it. I wanna keep moving. And we'll come back to that question, um, in a bit. Mr. Sisneros and then Ms. Shelby, please.
Thanks. Um, I'll, I'll be, I think I'll be fairly quick. People have covered a lot of material and I'm not gonna try and. Add too much to that, but rather I was spending my time thinking about a way to kind of organize our thoughts. And so the, the, the model I came up to is kind of grouping them into three topics. The first one being support of the legal profession itself, the second one being support of the public. And the third being engagement with, uh, partners to achieve success. And the first one. Um, support of the legal profession, uh, I think what goes in there is a lot about what everyone's talked about. How do people enter the legal profession? Um, is that an exam? Is it some other way of entering the legal profession? What are the ongoing educational sources that we can either provide to them or refer them to, to mark your point about CLA and their role? How do we support, um, attorneys, particularly, you know, those with, um, you know, not a lot of resources, not part of a big firm. Um, maybe not a lot of experience, uh, maybe even as I know some of our, um, programs already do. You know, struggling with, you know, substance abuse or whatever. But also I think we support the legal industry by al-also providing an adequate amount of oversight. And making sure that they're, you know, as we talked about a lot in the client trust account, um, protection program. Um, making sure that they have the resources to do that the right way, making sure we help them understand what their obligations are. Uh, the, the other jurisdictions we spoke to actually found that when they put client trust protection. Programs in place, they spent most of their time helping people do it right. Not, you know, disciplining people for, um, stealing money or anything like that. So I think that category is very, of course, very broadened. A lot of other people have mentioned things, ways we support attorneys. I think the way obviously we, we protect and support the public is a lot of what everyone's been talking about, access to legal services. Um, making referrals to people for, for, you know, legal assistance, help attorneys. Whatever form that's gonna take going forward, um, dealing with people who've been wrong. You know, registering complaints, following up on complaints, maybe even, uh, providing restitution. Uh, you know, so the whole, the way we deal with the public, the way we support the public, the way we educate the public. The way we maybe tell the public, you know, don't talk to anybody for legal advice until you verify that they're on the, the state bar website. As a certified legal provider of legal services, you know, if you, if you don't check there first. You know, you're just asking for a boatload of trouble, you know, maybe that's an advertising campaign, but. But we've gotta do a better job of supporting the public. And I think a lot of people have already talked about ways to do that. And then I think. The other one, uh, constituency that we're really, you know, challenged with, of course, a lot of the time. Is engaging and collaborating with our partners and, and those run the gamut, you know? I mean, the obvious ones, the legislature, the judicial system, even the executive branch, the state government. You know, the folks that, that support us, the past laws that, that provide, help us provide. Uh, and laws and statutes to help us provide the services and, and make available the resources and collect the fees and. And, and, and provide the protections. Um, all of that, uh, you know, is, is critical for us. Uh, but I think we've got other stakeholders too, that people have brought up over and over again, other bar organizations. Um, you know, um, law schools are, 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 are partners of ours. Um. You know, consumer organizations are partners of ours, community groups are partners of ours. Every judge in the state is a partner of ours and, and on and on and on. And so I kind of, I'm, I'm starting to put things into those three buckets of. The profession itself, the public we serve, and the partners we do both those things with.
Good work. Thank you for that. All right, Ms. Shelby.
Um, I agree with a lot of the things that everybody has said and I really put my, um. These three, four buckets. So embedding diversity, equity and inclusion throughout all of the operations of the state bar. This is a repetitive one, so I apologize. Reducing the backlog and establishing, um, shared metrics. Reducing the backlog and establishing shared metrics amenable to all stakeholders. Educate all licensees, stakeholders, and partners, and general public through ongoing and targeted communication about resources at the state bar. And then, I love what Sean said about restoring because I think it's important to, to, to note that. And so restoring and building effective relationships with all constituencies, including legislative, regulatory, judiciary, and of course, the general public.
Okay. Let's go back to backlog. I've asked the same question of everyone, and I have another question for you. Is that a function, as Mr. Stalling says, of reallocating resources?
It may be a function of reallocating resources, but I don't think we, it may be a function of reallocating resources. It may be a function of additional resources. But I think we're going to have to be effective with the resources we currently have. I don't know if we have the footing to be able to say we need more.
Okay. And this piece, I meant to ask a couple of you this around educating licensees. Is that, as someone else said, in the lane, if you will, of CLA? Or is that, is that something that this entity should do or should continue to do?
When I think of, when I think of supporting, when I look at our mission statement and I think of supporting, particularly support of efforts for greater access to and inclusion, what comes to mind for me is pipeline, people who aren't there, representation, people who are already there. Then the composition of what kind of the diverse constituencies who we deal with that, that are there.
All right.
Did we, did we move the LAP program over to CLA? I can't remember.
No, we never got authority to do that. It's still with us.
So we still have that, right?
We just, we just appointed somebody in our board meeting to LAP.
Hope it wasn't me.
No, thanks. No, no, it wasn't, Mark. But thank you for your support.
No, no, that would have been a bad question if I just got appointed as liaison.
No, Melanie means you just, we just appointed somebody to the Oversight Committee, not, not as a board liaison.
So I have not, I'm sure everybody's relieved. I've not heard from Mr. Soul on goals. You're on mute, sir. Sorry.
I've been sitting here listening, and so much of what I'm thinking is embedded in, in, in what others have said that I really feel like, you know, I just don't want to be redundant. Okay?
Okay. But I'm going to press you to at least give me the two or three areas where you heard something that really resonated with you the most. That way I will have heard from you.
Clearly. The, the issue about improving and sort of restoring relationships is, is, is front and center for me. Issue of addressing the disciplinary system in terms of the backlog is, is also up there. And then finally, the, the issue of access to, to justice in its various facets that folks have talked about is also the three that I would, that I'd put up there.
Okay, since you raised it, just, and since you didn't talk as long as everybody else, what does access to justice mean to you?
I use, and I purposely said in its many facets because I, I do, I do believe there is a DEI component to, to all that. I believe it is, I was, I've been paying very close attention to Brandon and, and to Mark Broughton's sort of talk about what's happening in sort of rural California as it relates to, to, to access to justice, as well as what Jose and others, Hyland have, have talked about in, in relationship to, whether it's law schools or other sort of groups that we would consider to be a part of our stakeholder community that can, that can assist us in terms of education outreach, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. I appreciate that. So Leah, I'm going to come to you in a second, so be, be, be prepared. Thank you, Mr. Soul. I want to circle back to Mr. Chairman, who, who came out first. Handle backlog, relationship with the legislature, more diversified profession is where you started. So I'm bringing it back around to ask, did you hear anything that changes your perspective, your order? Or, or anything on your list?
No, I don't think so. It's, it's a good conversation.
Okay. Did anybody else hear anything or change, want to change their order priority or anything on their list, or add something to your list? Okay, because I think we certainly heard some common themes. But Leah, you said you wanted to wait before kind of weighing in on some of what you've heard. And I want to give you a chance to offer some feedback as well.
Sure. I just sent some to Dag that you could cut and paste if you want it popped to your email really quick. But if it's too hard, I said, "Strong relationships to advance our mission." You got them? Okay. Yeah. So this is kind of, as I was just listening to everybody, these are some of the ways I was thinking about it. Thinking about relationships. An informed public and an empowered public, which to me, access to legal services would go under it. And I, I do believe that it's important for the state bar to clarify its role. And for me, that is legal services. That's not just lawyers, but that's just my take. Meaningful and effective prevention would be another kind of big category. A robust and effective enforcement system. Understanding that priority one is addressing the backlog and developing new case processing standards or metrics that have buy-in and credibility. And then a diverse and inclusive profession. So those are the buckets I thought of.
Are you open to using the term "public protection" instead of enforcement in your buckets? Because I heard that a little.
Sure, yeah. I, I'm not. This is just my immediate thoughts for the words consideration. I don't, I don't feel wanted to any, to any of it. I do have, you know, opinions that I'm happy to share.
Yes. No, and I did, I raised that because I actually thought, I, I like that, that posture, if you will, of public protection, you know, versus enforcement. Enforcement sounds, sounds more harsh. Okay. So two things that I want to just do is ask a couple of you, in addition to maybe our chair, maybe Mr. Tony. And is Mr. Stalling still on?
Yo, I'm still here.
There you are. I see you. I'm sorry. As, because you, you are, you make up the, you've made up the, been so helpful on the working group. Mr. Tony, go ahead, but I was going to ask you both to give some feedback around just, you know, what I'm hearing as themes. But what, what are you hearing as themes? Well, go ahead, Mr. Tony.
Here we go. You know, I, I want to give some reflections on the, on what I've heard these last two days and a recommendation for how to move forward. Okay?
Okay.
So I am incredibly encouraged by what I've heard these last two days. I, I am just incredibly encouraged. And I, and I think because, you know, strategic planning is so important. And I think that it's so important for any board involved in strategic planning to have a strong consensus, to reach a strong consensus. We, it, 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 we really don't want a, I think that we as a body would be far better served from a strategic plan that all of us enthusiastically embrace, rather than a strategic plan that some of us really like and some of us are okay with. And some of us are like, you know, I could, I can grin and bear it. And I really think, though, we're pretty close. That's what it feels like to me, that I, I've heard just a lot of agreement. I also feel that there are a lot of questions that were brought up that are not realistic for us to believe we can resolve in the remaining time today. But I would suggest that we probably need another full day of conversation to just go in a little deeper. Some of the, you know, particularly the questions that Trustee Broughton brought up about what does access to justice mean? Who, the who and the what and the where, the location, you know? Trustee Stoll also brought up the location. So there are a lot of components. People have also brought up the, you know, the, the race equity issues. How to make sure that that, that's considered. So I, I, I think we're pointed in the same direction. I am just going to make a, you know, just for myself. I am exhausted mentally after two full days. Maybe I'm the only one, but I am. And so I, I, I'd like some consideration of, you know, thinking about wrapping up a little early today and really focusing on having a continuation of this discussion in March. I think it's more important to give ourselves the time to come to strong consensus than it is to try to wrap this up in, in a short period of time. That is my thought.
Okay. And the other member of the working group, thank you, Mr. Tony, Mr. Stollins.
Yes, I agree with, with Mark. I haven't heard anything from any member that's, you know, particularly, particularly divergent or, or different than what I hear as a whole. So, yeah, I too am encouraged. And the thing that keeps on popping up into my mind is, you know, if, if a business, let's say there's a failure of operations, there's no money, they go into bankruptcy, they restructure. There's like this period where, you know, goes into receivership. The debts are forgiven, the slate is wiped clean. Certainly, the state bar can't do that. And, you know, can't go into receivership, as it were. But I really feel like, just in looking at the objectives of the last strategic plan from 2017 to 2022, that I'm really encouraged in the, the broad steps that we've made to try and reestablish that credibility to, not, not that our slate is wiped clean, but that we have, I believe, really answered the call. The staff has really stepped up, that this board has really stepped up to make those tough decisions. And I think that in going forward into that next level of accountability of rebuilding trust, that we may have to make some other really tough decisions. And I think this board is well-equipped to, with the stomach to do that and has the vision to ensure that the next steps going forward, as we rebrand what the state bar of California looks like, that we're going to, that we're in a great, great setting for that. So we have a lot of talent on this board, a lot of very connected and caring people. So I'm incredibly encouraged by this process.
One thing we would do if we were in the room together is I would also ask you to take a look at what is a pretty robust list and certainly have seen some themes. I would ask you to pick one as diagnose. And because it's one way to start to help to prioritize. And so I'm going to call on the two folks that have got their hands up. But I'm going to come back and ask you all to do that as well. That will help me. And even if this conversation, either as Mr. Tony proposes in early or we wind up with a, with another session, it still gives me a sense of where things are. So I'm going to call on Ms. Chen and then Mr. Broughton and then ask everybody to pick one, so to speak. Go ahead, Ms. Chen.
So I guess if I would pick one, it would have to do with our discipline system. And for me, it was getting to a place where we have an office of chief child counsel that is motivated, feels motivated and supported in achieving its goals of protecting the public. You know, obviously, getting through the backlog is part of that. I did want to comment on one thing where I feel like we're going to need definition, just as we need definition of what access to justice is. I totally agree with achieving, striving towards the goal of making sure diversity, equity, and inclusion is part of everything the state bar does, not a siloed department that is separate and apart, but that it is just intrinsic to everything that's done. I think we need to identify what the scope of that work is. It's something that we ran into in the, in the sort of reorganization process. But, you know, my druthers would be to focus on the areas where the state bar has sort of jurisdiction and regulatory power and that sort of thing. So on law schools, for example, one thing we haven't talked a lot about, but that is, you know, a serious part of what the state bar does is, you know, regulate via the bar exam what the topics are on the bar exam, accreditation. And so focusing on increasing diversity in law schools, they need help. They would love that help. And we also have to remember, we live in a state in California where some of the most significant law schools are public law schools. And California has a Prop 209. And so achieving and maintaining diversity in our law schools and making sure that graduation rates stay high and certainly the positive mindset intervention, which Leah, I always forget what we're supposed to call it now, stories and-
Strategies of stories.
Okay, I got close. I got one of the words. I think it was, was an amazing development. And so more things like that, I think it's, you know, a laudable goal that, that Juan promoted of getting more kids to go to law school, more kids of color to go to law school. I am not sure that is something that the state bar should try to impact right now because we just don't have those resources. I mean, we can partner with organizations that do that work, but that's not an area that we directly oversee. So I think, I think understanding what we mean by increasing diversity and equity and inclusion means can help us figure out where to prioritize.
Okay. And I thought one other person had their hand up, but they took it down.
Yes, I did, because I had it up there, I think, by mistake. But I wholeheartedly agree with, with Helen. The protection of the public through licensing regulation and disciplining of attorneys has to be the number one priority. I like the idea also of defining further access. And so I've been saying it all along. And also what Helen says, I get the sense that we're now building upon what we did five years ago. We're, we're taking sort of what we did, and now we're having to refine it. What does access mean? What does inclusion mean and so forth? Because these are all things that we did before. By the way, I will say this. This works a lot better when you're at the Sheraton on Harbor Island in San Diego and you're all together. Yeah, Zoom was great, but yeah, being together is, is wonderful. So, yeah, so I throw that in. That's important.
Okay, so I've got two picks for discipline. Mr. Sinsneros, pick one.
I guess my one, I'm going to go back to my categories. And I think we, the reason we do everything we do is to support and protect the public. That's why we, that's why we help, you know, administer and create a legal system. That's why we collaborate with our partners to, you know, to make that a success and to educate and all that. But it's all to support the public.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Daylin?
In the same manner, protect the public.
Okay. Mr. Stallings.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. There you go, you already took your meat button off, you knew I was looking at you.
I agree with Highland.
Discipline?
Yeah.
Mr. Tony.
I think protecting the public because it's a, a little bit broader than discipline.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soul.
I think I'll follow Mark's lead on that, but all these things are like one A, one B, one C, they're, they're so close. You know what I mean?
This part's meant to be hard, so I appreciate that. And usually when we're in the room, if we were at the, what was it, the Sheraton? I'd give you one dot and then I'd let you know it's going to have, let you have another one. But it just forces you to, you know, kind of focus on what really, what your real priority is. I appreciate that, but I'm not giving you a one A yet. Ms. Shelby?
Can you restate the question?
If you had to took, take a look at the entire list of priorities we've all just discussed, yours or someone else's, pick one most important.
Relationship building.
Okay. Mr. De La Cruz?
I would say public protection. I think disciplining attorneys is part of public protection, so.
Okay. I missed one. Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Really are going to force me to do one, huh? I'm going to say relationships.
Okay.
And I will just note for the record, Mark Broughton, that I tried really hard to get, to get us in the desert or in San Diego or somewhere.
That's how you can improve your performance now. Make it easier to get us there.
All right. It's not, it's not how we can improve our relationships with our stakeholders, I can tell you that. Going to a hotel in San Diego is not on the list.
Point well taken.
I do want to say, Sandra, I think when people pick public protection, it's a little bit of an out because public protection includes lots of things, so. I'm not, I'm not sure it counts as one thing.
I see it, but what I like that's happened, if I'm honest with you, is if we're, we're still in and around about three buckets. And there is, you know, the, the point was to start, as you asked, to get a little more consensus. I think for me, what's left to do now is to put some language around the buckets that, that sort of meet and match some of the language you all have used. We got ahead of you and, and used our language that we sort of pulled from what we heard in the early, early conversations. So that's one thing left to do. The other thing that's left to do, and again, I want to be mindful of Mr. Tony's request, and I think Mr. The Chair does as well, is to really be sure we define this question, these two questions. They, they are almost the same, but who is our public? And more to the point, what do we mean by access to justice? And I would ask that question, what do we mean by access to judgment, justice? With the cards we've got right now, in other words, with the capa, with the capacity and the, the, where we are able to and what, what policy change might look like as well and, and then what we mean. So those are the two of the big things left for us to do. The other thing, as Leah knows, that we wanted to spend some time on, and again, if we're going to take off another session to do that, is just to have a, a little bit of a conversation around resources. So that's what's left undone from where I sit, Mr. Chair. But I do feel like I've got a sense going into that next conversation of where the, the priorities for this group sit. So this, this is, this part's been helpful to me and I hope it has been to all of you.
I think I'm, I'm there with you. It makes it pretty obvious to me that we do need another session, whether it's a couple hours or a four hour block. I'll, you know, I'll put on the table, I think it's probably a three hour block at least. There's been a lot of work that each of the trustees and, and you guys have all put into today. So let me not forget to say again, thank you. Very encouraged, very energized, even though I sound tired. And I don't think it can wait until March. You know, I think that we should use February as an opportunity to, to bridge ourselves to March. And I see, I'm sorry, I see Leah's and Mark Broughton's hands up. Did you want to say something before we get to this next scheduling part?
Yeah, I just wanted to advocate for the point Highland raised because I also saw the tension between Juan's suggestion around going, you know, extending the pipeline back to encouraging people to go to law school and sort of certainly where our pipeline focus is now. And so I do think that, that's sort of another definitional issue to add to the access question and who is our public question that will be important for the board to tackle.
Thank you for that. Mark?
Just very briefly, I do recall that when we did the, the last five year strategic plan, we, we took more than one meeting to do that. There was the retreat and then we met again at least one or two times. And I do recall the pages, the butcher paper up and so over and so on. So it took a while to get to that point. The other thing is I, I just want to throw this out. We keep saying access to justice. The way it's defined in the, in the statute and the mission statement is access to the legal system. So that kind of defines our mission. I don't know if it's different, I don't know if it's the same, but that's what it says in our statement. I saw that up.
Access to the legal system.
So I mean, that, that also begs the question, okay, the legal system is a pretty amorphous term itself, right? It could mean just the courts. It could mean, you know, knowing a lawyer or a paralegal or another professional who, you know, has legal knowledge and can assist. I mean, there's, there's probably another definitional thing we need to do. And your point, Mark, about last time around, how it took a couple of full meetings, I think. I had something I didn't know, so I appreciate that. Let me suggest this, I know that we're looking at a February meeting on, on approving a budget, is that correct, Leah? Is that already, is that already scheduled?
I, Luisa, I don't know if you're on, I, I don't know if the date has been set yet for that meeting.
Not yet, no, I sent the poll, but we only have two responses so far.
So a reminder, Luisa, I'd like you to resend the poll right after this meeting, which is going to end early. So maybe everybody can then answer the poll.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pull out your calendars and, and let's get that, let's get that inked in. And then a general question to all of you. That, that sounds like between the budget and this next phase of the strategic planning, it would be a longer meeting, right? Four hours perhaps? Am I, am I misgauging that, Cassandra?
I think that's about right.
Four hours need for this discussion and then the budget.
Which would be another couple hours, Leah?
It doesn't need to be a couple of hours, but I will say that the reason that we postponed the discussion of the budget until February is we wanted to see if we needed to incorporate any changes into the draft based on the strategic planning discussions. We won't be able to do that now and the budget statutorily is due February 28th. So the budget just may not exactly reflect the decisions that you make in strategic planning. That just will mean we'll need to do a budget amendment, but I just want to point that out. I don't, I don't think we need two hours for the budget. Probably, yeah.
I, I see that our general counsel put her hand and her camera on and up. And I think, I think I know why. I think the question is if we are going to adjourn this meeting to a meeting in February, we need to know the date before we actually make that adjournment.
Well, sort of, it's on that subject, you're correct. If the meeting, this is the BK guideline compliance, if the meeting is going to be allowed 10 days notice, you don't need to do, invoke the adjournment provisions of Bagley. Can you just put that, I, this item on the, on the February agenda? And it sounds like it will be. If you think the meeting will happen fewer than 10 days from today, then we have to pass a resolution for adjournment, have a date certain now. But I think it's likely you're going to have your 10 days notice, so we don't have to do that.
No, it can't happen within 10 days because we need a finance committee meeting first, so no.
Well, Cassandra and her team and probably Mark and Brandon and I should meet once more before that as well. And that will also give all of us, the trustees, the time to think some more about these things. Hopefully we'll be able to send some, some written follow-up materials to trigger further thought, further preparation for the research, research, excuse me, for their homework for that, for that February meeting. So everybody good with that approach? You're going to get a doodle poll hopefully this afternoon from Luisa. Fill it out and then we will get something on calendar more than 10 days hence.
And Ruben, I'm going to ask Luisa to do it like for 10 to four or nine to three or something, just to give us enough time. If we end early, that'll be great.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. Everyone good with that? Okay, looks like yes. Anybody, anything we need to take care of with staff? Public comment, Vanessa, do we need to take public comment?
I think that's up to you.
What, what did you just say, Ruben?
Whether we needed to take public comment? I see a, I see a hand raised in the attendee list. I'm going to go ahead and entertain that public comment. We'll give whoever it is three minutes to address the board. They did hang in with us until the very, the very bitter end after all. So if you could, I'm not sure how we do this, is, do they need to be, there you are. Hadsell Stormer, Rennick, Dai, please, please share your thoughts, we've got three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is David Washington, I'm an attorney at Hadsell Stormer, Rennick and Dai, we're based out of Valley in Pasadena. I first, I just want to say thank you to everyone for, you know, the work you're doing on, on all of this. I think it's really important. I, there's one concern that I think we had, which is involving people in the, attorneys in the, in the strategic planning process. It was pretty difficult for us to find out about this meeting in the first place. And, and, you know, we reached out to places like UCLA, the National Lawyers Guild, CLO, which is the Employment Lawyers Association here in LA, Lackey Labor and Employment Council on American Islamic Relations, Muslim Bar Association of SoCal, ACLU, and none of these organizations were aware of the survey or of this meeting. None of the people we talked to at them were, and you know, I, I obviously, I, I was here for most of the meeting today. I didn't hear it was a discussion closed session, obviously, but I didn't hear any, any discussion at all of the surveys. I don't know how many of them were filled out. I know a number of us here at Hadsell Stormer filled them out. But I, I think, especially when it comes to questions of diversity and inclusion, getting the input of people and how, hearing what, what, you know, what's going on on the ground is important. And so I think I would just encourage you all for this upcoming session, future sessions to do some outreach in terms of letting people know that this is happening and, and seeking feedback from people. Yeah, that's just a concern that I had that I wanted to share.
Thank you for that input. It's, it's, it's taken seriously and, and appreciated, as is your attendance. I'm, I'm going to ask the board's indulgence for just a few minutes because I see that Andrew Tuft is also listed as an attendee. Folks probably recognize Andrew's name as a very talented ethicist and lawyer who has assisted some of our work over the, over the years. Works in the Office of General Counsel. Andrew has recently announced his departure, impending departure from the bar to pursue another opportunity. And so Andrew, I don't know whether you are comfortable coming on and, and letting us see your face so we could say thank you and wish you Godspeed and well in your next endeavor. But I certainly wanted to tell you that I appreciate all the good work that you've done since, since I've known you on the board, so. I'll open it up, if anybody wants to say anything, there he is.
I am not camera ready, but I appreciate that so much, Mr. Chair. And I know you guys have been busy at work. I did not need to take any of your time, but I do just want to acknowledge you taking the time of acknowledging me, which is very kind and sweet and I appreciate that. I know it's been a long day for you all, so I won't take any more time. I'm just listening as a interested member of the public, concerned person of the profession and a loyal former employee of the state bar. So thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I, I got the timing wrong, I apologize. I wasn't sure when the departure was, but it must have happened very recently. So again, good luck to you and thank you for all your work. Okay, trustees, staff, everyone, thank you so much for a solid two days. Melanie, you did it with COVID. That's probably got to be a first in the history of the state bar, so you go down in the annals. All right, that's it, we're adjourned.
Okay, thank you, bye.
Yeah, I'll see Melanie.
Bye, everyone.